Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 10th School Board Meeting for Prince William County Schools. We are going to go ahead and get started. I'm not sure who has the flag today. Anyone have the flag, Ms. Argarpur? If you'd like to lead us in... Oh, actually, I'm sorry, I have to call the meeting to order first. Excuse me. It's my first time running the meeting. So, for information, I'd like to call the School Board Meeting to order. The purpose of this meeting... For information, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board is being conducted electronically under the authority granted by the General Assembly on April 22nd, 2020, through Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, which permits the School Board to meet electronically during the pendency of the current state of emergency for the purpose of transacting such business as is statutorily required or necessary to conduct operations of the Prince William County Public Schools and the discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. A motion is in order now for the closed session. I'm going to go ahead and make that motion. The Prince William County School Board approved the closed session agenda as recommended. Do we have a second?
Second.
Diane seconds. I'm going to go ahead. Is there any discussion? All right, I'm going to take roll. Dr. Latif is not present at the meeting. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston?
Yes.
Ms. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Wilk?
Yes.
Ms. Argarpur?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Moving on, we need a motion to enter closed session. I'm going to go ahead and read that motion. If I can get my screen to go right here, okay. The motion is that pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711, the Prince William County School Board enter closed session for the following reasons: One, to discuss with staff and to discuss with legal counsel the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, discipline, and/or resignation of specific personnel to which matters require the advance advice of counsel under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1 and 8; Two, to consult with legal counsel regarding the legal investigations involving specific personnel and requiring the advice of counsel under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1 and 8; Three, to discuss the qualifications and selection of student representatives to the School Board for the 2021 school year under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1; and Four, to discuss with staff and division counsel regarding the specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A and 8. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Ralston seconds. Any discussion? Okay, I'm going to go through the roll call again. Again, Dr. Latif is not present for the vote. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston?
Yes.
Mr.... Ms. Wall, excuse me?
Yes.
Mr. Wilk?
Yes.
Ms. Argarpur?
Yes.
And myself, I vote yes. I don't have a gravel to strike. So, the Prince William County School Board will now enter closed session and return to open session in approximately one hour. Welcome back, everybody. The William County School Board is now returning to open session from closed session. There are no current action items from closed session. So, we're going to move on to the adoption of the closed session consent agenda that is on for action. Did anyone want to make that motion? All right, I'll go ahead and make the motion. Motion is that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session consent agenda as recommended. Do I have a second? Ms. Jessie seconds. Any discussion? All right, we'll go and round robin order. Dr. Latif? Not sure he joined in yet. Okay, Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie?
Yes.
She might not have gotten back off mute yet. Ms. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Wilk?
Yes.
Ms. Argarpur?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We're going to return to closed session after we finish open session. So, Mary, I just want to confirm that we don't need to certify closed session, or do we need to do that twice?
Yes, we need to do that twice.
Okay. Thank you, Mary. So, we are going to certify the closed session. I'm going to go ahead and read that motion. Move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3712, the closed session of Prince William County School Board Meeting of June 10th, 2020, be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies; and two, that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the School Board. Do we have a second?
Second. Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Lolly.
Okay, Diane seconds.
Ralston seconds. Any discussion? All right, we'll go round robin again. Dr. Latif, not sure if he's joined. Sorry, I don't have my panelist box open yet. Nope, okay, Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston?
Yes.
Ms. Wall?
Yes.
Awesome. Mr. Wilk?
Yes.
Ms. Argarpur?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. All right, now, we are going to move on to the public hearing for the middle school attendance area. Let's see. Public hearing for Potomac Shores Middle School and affected middle school attendance areas is on for information. I'm going to go ahead and read the summary, and then, Mr. Bixby or Mr. Sharofy, if you are on the line and would like to take over, that would be great. So, in summary, School Board Policy 810 requires that student housing needs be reviewed annually, excuse me, and that the recommendations be made to provide sufficient and adequate space to house students and educational programs. In accordance with this policy and Virginia Code 2.2-1-798, this public hearing is being held to receive public input on the proposed recommendations for the attendance area assignments for the Potomac Shores Middle School that is scheduled to open for the 2021-22 school year. Although due to COVID-19 state emergency, this hearing and the following School Board Meeting are being held electronically under the authority granted by the General Assembly through Amendment 28 to HB 29. Citizens have provided with multiple opportunities... Have been provided with multiple opportunities to provide public input, including electronic participation in the public comment portion of the hearing, posting of the comments as dictated on the PWCS webpage, and submission of comments to the School Board members by email and email. Citizens who have signed up to speak electronically for this evening must confine their comments to the recommendation... Recommended attendance area assignments for the new middle school. So, now, I declare that a public hearing is now open on the subject of the middle school attendance area modifications that result from opening the Potomac Shores Middle School for the 2021-22 school year. Any citizen who has signed up to speak on this matter will be permitted to do so and admitted electronically to this meeting for that purpose. Do we have the citizens ready to participate in citizen comment time at this time?
I will go through the list and from top to bottom, and we will invite them as we see them.
Okay, Mr.... I think that's Mr. Beaver speaking. Mr. Beavers, if you would just take note. If we have citizens who are... missed their called opportunity time, if we can circle back at the end, because the initial announcement was posted that we would start at 7:30, so I just want to make sure in case someone stepped away momentarily that they do have the opportunity to speak, if no objections by the rest of the board. All right, let's proceed, please.
Okay, the first person we have is Katerzina Luchak, but I don't see her. She is not joined, so I'm going to move to the next.
Do you know how to do this? Set this up and...
It's not easy.
No, but this is getting ready to go out because...
Ms. Jennifer Gilli is the first of our... on our list that is available.
I'm sorry, I think I signed up for the wrong time. I was signing up to speak about the COVID, the schools and the COVID issue.
Can we circle back and have Ms. Gilli under citizen comment time? Thank you, Ms. Gilli.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
Just a second. Rani Elter is our next speaker. They can go ahead and unmute their microphone and speak.
Hi, good evening. This is Renee Elter. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, no feedback on the line. I have both my phone and iPad going, so I just wanted to double check. The Neepsco Hills neighborhood. Thank you to the board for hearing me this evening. We have previously shared concerns... Neighborhood, knowing that we had good elementary and middle school options as our children were younger at that time, and that's what we were looking for. And it seems that our concerns, unfortunately, could not be taken into consideration with the planning as we're left with both school boundary proposals here that are taking us out of Saunders this time next year. And so, I feel that all that I can ask for now is that the board consider allowing an exemption to the rising seventh grade class again this time next year, just as you are giving the rising eighth grade class. And I'd like to stress that it's even more important now, given that our students are starting middle school journey this year in the middle of the pandemic. We all know that... And the governor confirmed this last night, that things are very uncertain. And in order to try to provide these students with some stability in their academics and the stability that they will have with the support of their peers, these students should be given this option to stay at Saunders, the school in which they start. It is a small number of students we are talking about that are being impacted, and I understand the proposed plans already state that the capacity will not... I don't think it's right to take this small set of students and endure one certain year or another. You can't give that risk for them. And finally, I want to thank Dr. Cartledge and his team in taking the time to meet with me and his overall responsiveness, and Mr. Wilk as well. I am disappointed not to hear from Mrs. Ralston, but hope she hears these concerns tonight and will help to encourage the board to consider allowing the seventh graders the options to stay at Saunders next year.
Okay, I'll be looking for our next speaker. Give me just a second. I'm trying to find our next speaker that is logged in. Our next speaker that is logged in and signed up is Evelyn Brumar.
I'm here to speak. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm here to actually speak about the proclamation. Should I wait for that one?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I will add that to the next list.
Thank you. The public... Just bear with us. This is our first electronic public hearing, so we're doing our best here. Just give us a little bit of patience, and we're going to allow for that on your end as well.
Our next guest will be Mr. Jason Corzen. Your microphone is open, sir.
Thank you. Everyone hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Thanks for making the process available online. Really appreciate it. These are kind of weird times. So, just quickly, our family is in a small section of Montclair, Edgewood, Cranberry, and Brandywine that attends Henderson Elementary School, but is... We're currently zoned for Grand Park. When our older kids left Henderson, the way it worked out is just a small number of kids ended at Grand Park, so it was almost like moving to a new city. And we've enjoyed Grand Park, but it had some challenges because of that. I just wanted to say the new proposed boundary plans fixed that issue for our family and our neighbors, keeps the kids with their classmates at Henderson, allows them to progress to Saunders. So, I just want to express my support for the current boundary plans that they presented. Thanks to the committee volunteers, the board members, and our representative, Mr. Wilk. You have my time.
All right, I'm looking for our next speaker. Ms. Margaret Uy is our next speaker. Go ahead and unmute your microphone. Ms. Margaret Uy. L-L-U-Y. She just went offline.
All right, maybe we want to circle back. Thank you.
Well, there she is. She's on now.
Okay, good.
Okay, hi, this is Margaret. My daughter attends Patty Elementary. I'm part of the neighborhoods on 244 Grand Park due to significant overcrowding at Grand Park. And I want to take a second to put a plug in that the next new middle school be on our side five, so we aren't having this extended travel time more than five miles away. So, I'll just put that plug in. Most of the Grand Park crowd naturally wants to avoid the Route 1 congestion as possible. Under the preliminary plan, all of... We were going up Route 1 with traffic and coming down Route 1 with the commuter traffic. So, most of us are more in favor of Plan 2. Preferably, I think Plan 2B keeps more of Patty Elementary together. And we've heard rumors that there's going to be a 234 extension right into Potomac Shores. And if that's the case, then it's really a no-brainer that all these 234 displaced Grand Park kids would be much easier to commute to. Another issue, of course, is transportation efficiency. Preliminary plan with Route 1, and people north of Potomac Middle School were coming down Route 1, basically passing each other in opposite directions. So, Plan 2, either A or B, but Plan 2 efficiency, and it saves money and time. And another benefit and a reason I support Plan 2 overall is the Grand Park Middle School kids, as I said, are getting displaced. The current Potomac Middle School kids, if they don't get displaced, and they get to stay with their progression at the same campus they're going to go to high school. So, I think it's just Plan 2 makes much more sense for the neighborhoods on 234 getting displaced from Grand Park. So, thank you.
Okay, moving on to our next speaker. Ms. Tricia Hellicher. You can go ahead and unmute your microphone.
Hello. Thank you for letting me speak on the boundary middle school changes. My name is Tricia Halkinger, and I have a current fourth grader and first grader at Patty Elementary. My fourth grader will be a member of the first sixth grade class affected by these changes. We're currently zoned for Grand Park Middle School, but neither of the proposed plans have us going to Grand Park. So, either way, we're going to be zoned for a new middle school. So, I'm asking that the board supports Plan 2B as it's the... As this plan splits Patty into two middle schools versus three in Plan 1. This allows for more students to naturally progress together from elementary to middle school. Plan 2B also provides for better transportation, as Margaret alluded to before me. As you guys know, if you live on the eastern part of the county, Route 1 is very congested, especially in the morning and afternoon commutes. So, limiting the amount of time a bus would have to spend on Route 1 really will impact the amount of time... The travel time it will take and the amount of time that kids have to spend on the bus. So, I'm really asking that you vote for Plan 2B. Thank you for your time.
Okay, now, it's our next speaker. Michelle Lor. You can unmute your microphone, and you are live.
Hello. Thank you for your time. My question... This is my first board meeting, so please excuse me. My question is more general, so I guess I would go to the bottom. I mean, or come back to me. Is that correct?
No, ma'am, this is your assigned time to speak. So, if you have comments for the public hearing, we're more than willing to listen at this time.
Even if it's not related to the boundary, ma'am?
No, this is for the boundaries and the public hearing on the middle school boundaries. If you are speaking in general for citizen comment time, we can add you to that list and...
Yes, please. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
You're welcome, Mr. Beavers. We'll move on to the next person.
Okay, we've actually gone through the list, so I'm going to circle back to the beginning.
Thank you, sir.
And just see if a couple of the ones we missed are in. Ms. Deputy, that's all we have for this list. The other people that signed up aren't in, so I will keep the three members that want to speak later, and we will put them at the end of the list that we have for citizen comment, if that's okay.
Fine with me. Any objection from the board? Okay, looks like we have completed the list of members who are signed up for the public hearing. I just want to get a general feeling from the board. The announcement did say that 7:30. Would we like to wait for four minutes or move on if you're in favor of moving on? We'll go ahead and proceed. Does anyone have any issues with moving on? Ms. Wall?
Ms. Wallace, how many... Can we get a number of how many people we signed up that we weren't able to... I mean, how many people are we waiting for?
Three, three out of 10.
That's good.
Ms. Wall?
Maybe we could just hang on for a few minutes, just in case they're going to jump on at 7:30. I don't want to get... I don't want them to get lost in the communication issue with the time.
If everyone kind of agrees, we'll just shake our head or... All right, so we're just going to... To the members of the public who are watching, we're going to sort of hang tight for another three minutes, just to make sure that we don't miss anyone, since this slide did say that we were coming back at 7:30 to provide an equal and fair opportunity for everyone. So, we'll just hang around for another three minutes. Mr. Beavers, if you'd just let us know at 7:30 if you see anybody popping on, that'd be greatly appreciated, sir.
I will let you know if I see any of the three pop in. Madam Deputy, it's 7:30, and none of them have signed in.
All right, I have 7:29. We'll just give them one more minute, because we're all having technical challenges from time to time. I appreciate that update, Mr. Beavers. I like your clock, though, for sure.
This way is... Mr. Beavers is not on. Is there something that I can assist you with?
No, we're just waiting.
Jason Stevens. It's Jason Stevens, just a...
I'm sorry, I just keep... You sound like Mr. Beaver. It's my fault. I deeply apologize for that. Thank you, Jason.
That's okay, no problem.
Technical difficulties. I'm having naming difficulties.
Not a problem. And none of these members are still on, Madam Deputy.
All righty, all right. Well, it's 7:30, so I am, with no objection, before the board, ready to close the public hearing. Anybody have any objections or concerns at this time? Okay, so, having that, there being no other citizens who have signed up to speak on this matter, I declare the public meeting hearing closed. We're going to move on. I would like to call the meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. This meeting of the Prince William County School Board is being conducted electronically for the limited purpose of addressing matters related to COVID-19 under crisis under the authority provided by 2.2-3708.2A3 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and the April 22nd, 2020 Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, which permits elected school boards to meet... Permits elected school boards to meet, excuse me, electronically during this current state of emergency. Amendment 28 limits the purpose of such meetings to matters which are statutorily required or necessary to continue operations of the Prince William County Public Schools and the School Board's discharge of its lawful purposes and duties and responsibilities. Accordingly, the agenda for the School Board meeting is confined to items addressing the COVID-19 emergency as it affects Prince William County Schools and/or items which are legally required, such as the boundary hearing required by Virginia Code 222.1-798 or items which are legally required, or items which the school board deems necessary to the continued operations of the school division. For this reason, unlike the meetings of other public bodies, all discussions by board members, staff, and/or citizens must be limited to agenda items during such time as the school board conducts electronic meetings during the state of emergency. While the school board very much welcomes citizen input and is now able to accommodate, uh, citizen comment portion of the meeting through electronic means, this, of communications, citizens, like school board members, may only, sorry, I had to move my screen up, may only, um, may, so that while the school board very much welcomes citizen input and is now able to accommodate the citizen comment portion of the meeting through the means of electronic communications, citizens like board members may only address specific agenda items which fall within the limitations imposed on the electronic meetings by Virginia law. The school board encourages public input through other means as detailed on the Prince William County Schools website, including the submission of public comment at, um, and then there's a URL listed, tiny dot C C dash citizen comment. Uh, now, moving on, I believe Ms. Zargarpur is our resident flag holder. Ms. Zargarpur, would you, uh, put up the flag for us and then lead us in the pledge? All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Zargarpur. We're going to move on now to, um, the approval of the public meeting agenda. This item is on for action. The motion is that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Ms. Ralston, seconds. Um, all right, I'm going to do the roll call. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston?
Yes.
Ms. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Wilk?
Yes.
Ms. Zargarpur?
Yes.
And Ms., Dr. Latif is not present at this time, and I also vote yes. All right, we are going to move on now to, uh, citizen comment time. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, we are moving on to the adoption of the consent agenda. So I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended. Do I have a second?
Second. Oh, go ahead, Lily.
Ms. Jessie, I are second?
I'll, I'll take, I, I didn't need to interrupt, I, yeah.
No, that's okay, that's all right.
I said.
All right, any discussion? All right, with no discussion, we'll go ahead to roll call. Uh, Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston?
Yes.
Ms. Wall?
Yes.
Ms. Zargarpur?
Yes.
Mr. Wilk?
Yes.
Again, Dr. Latif is not present for the vote, and I also vote yes.
Actually, Ms. Williams, I, I vote yes as well. I just got back in, but keep running the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Latif, for joining us, and, uh, as he mentioned, I will keep moving on. Uh, so now, we are going to move on to citizen comment time. Uh, with that being said, due to the COVID-19 state of emergency and legal restrictions on the school board's authority to conduct its meetings through the elec, through electronic means, unlike other public bodies meeting electronically under more expansive legal authority, all discussion at this meeting by board members, staff, and citizens must be limited to agenda items. When the board is able to resume meetings with a physical quorum present, expanded citizen comment time will be resumed as provided by Policy 134. On May 20th, 2020, citizen comment time was reinstated on a limited basis in order to allow public comment through electronic means during the state of emergency. The first 15 citizens who have signed up in advance with the school board clerk via email no later than 5:00 PM Monday, June 9th, June 8th, 2020, may address the school board virtually on agenda items only through the following procedure. One, comments will be limited to two minutes. Two, citizens who sign up to speak must identify for the clerk via, uh, will address the, by email whether citizen is among the first 15 to sign up, provide.
Um, you know, I'll, I'll jump in here, Ms. Williams, we're having a bad connection with you. Uh, I'll, I'll read, but, yeah, let me go ahead and finish, um, where she was at. The citizens who are not among the first 15 notified or encouraged to submit their comments by email to the clerk who will share them with the school board and to submit any comments to the school board through the dedicated webpage provided for this purpose. Um, six citizens have signed up to speak. Um, we are kind of, a couple of us are struggling with, um, weather-related issues in our connections, but, uh, can you all hear me? Okay, uh, I will call the first, uh, Mr. Stevens, we will go ahead and call the first, um, citizen, that would be Richard Stark.
Second, Dr. Latif.
Okay. And everyone who is not speaking, please mute, just because there's some background noise. Um, and again, the weather is pretty bad here, um, in different parts of the county, so I, I would just, uh, ask for patience as we get through the technological issues of getting this meeting in order.
Mr. Chairman, um, uh, Mr. Stark is unmuted and ready to speak.
Go ahead, Mr. Stark, thank you.
Hi, good evening, uh, Richard Stark, and, uh, my address is on file. In June 2015, something really big happened. And I don't know if you guys can cast your memory back to 2015, June 2015, but back then, Green Court affirmed quality, which is something huge. It was, it was a big step for our country, and, uh, it was a big change. Something else in 2015, there was also a big change, and that was that the strategic plan of the Prince William School Board was approved for 2016 through 2020. A lot has changed since then. In September 2015, the US joined the Paris Climate Accord, and since then, has, has also given notice to leave the accord. In 2015, the concentration of CO2 in parts per million was 400 parts per million. Today, in 2020, right now, we're sitting at 417 parts per million. A reminder for everybody, a safe level for us to live on this planet is 350 parts per million. Every year, CO2 levels are rising. And I find it disappointing that today, the board is going to approve a strategic plan that was approved back in June 2015. I implore the board to consider adding amendments to this strategic plan specifically addressing the climate change emergency that our children face today. Thank you so much for your service.
You too.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stark. Next, Kate Olson Flynn. Please restart the timer, Mr. Stevens.
Yes?
Ms. Olson Flynn, you are unmuted.
Is it my turn to talk?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good evening, board. I haven't, having bad connections. I have to listen on my phone and then see it on the computer, it's crazy. So, uh, good evening, board. Um, first, I'd like to say thank you for all your hard work during this difficult time. As a county, it is encouraging that we're having powerful conversations about breaking down institutional barriers and racism in our society and schools. However, at the same time, we still must contend with the pandemic and all it is doing to disrupt our daily lives. After hearing the governor speak yesterday, there continues to be great concern in our, in the community about any plans that Prince William County Schools will have to ensure that our children continue to receive a world-class education online. It was evident this spring that schools and teachers across the county interpreted how to teach online in very different ways. Some teachers knew every day with students and others did not at all. This discrepancy in access to face-to-face teaching online is problematic and is ripe for inequities to flourish. Part of the problem was because of the access to technology, which is why Parents Who Care advocated at the supervisors' meeting for more money for schools for computers and to help follow CDC guidelines to help keep students and teachers safe. It's important to remember, though, that when parents enroll their children in school, we do so with the belief that the schools will educate them because the professionals who are trained in pedagogy are there, and they know how to convey information so that our children are successful in learning the content. Parents Who Care believe that it's imperative that the administration in the Kelly Center determines a uniform schedule of online instruction to guarantee that every teacher will interact and teach face-to-face with students consistently across classrooms and schools so that all parents can feel secure in the fact that their children are getting equal access to instruction with teachers online. Only with a routine teaching schedule online can parents then begin to plan a way to get back to work and be confident that they won't have to juggle homeschooling with their employment. Education is a cornerstone of society, and we need it to be operational for all if we want our Prince William community to survive this crisis and begin to thrive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn, Kate Olson Flynn, Dr. Kate Olson Flynn, my apologies, Magaly Hurtado.
Okay, um, okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So, good afternoon, members of the board. We are grateful for our teachers, for your work, and also for our teachers and their efforts to keep our students engaged in learning. Looking back, however, we can see that there were big discrepancies on how remote interaction and learning was provided in the county. Moving forward, plans to go back to school should focus on safety and equitable learning and interaction. The schools across the county need to have a consistent schedule coming from this building, I mean, the Kelly Leadership Center. Uh, I understand such consistency should also address students with special services like English learner, gifted, speech therapy, et cetera. Canvas is a great tool, I'm excited about it, but to really benefit from it, school leadership must provide a consistent plan and schedule to go along with it. Without parameters for scheduled interactions with students, Canvas will not be effective, and it can exacerbate the inequities in our county. Any online learning system must be a tool that enhances interaction and not one that aims to replace it with videos and recorded sessions. Families who need to opt out for telelearning need to be heard as much as families who are planning to send their students back to school based on the governor's guidelines. Both groups of students deserve a consistent schedule. Again, videos and links do not replace interaction. The amount of quality, uh, the amount and quality of regular interaction that my second grader got from his teacher was amazing. I'm very grateful for it. Um, she's a phenomenal educator, and I understand it wouldn't have been fair to expect that level of engagement from teachers across the county, even the circumstances, and considering that new content upgrading was not part of the equation. However, moving forward, all classrooms must provide a schedule for consistent interaction within students and teachers. A mandated schedule coming from leadership, uh, will empower principals to achieve that consistency throughout their schools. Also, on a recent statement, the superintendent mentioned, uh, that representative parents are being brought to the tables to evaluate plans. How do I get a seat on that table? Um, I would like to participate in that. Also, how can we support you in getting preliminary plans in front of the Board of Supervisors? If we are requesting funding from them, I guess they would like to see what the plans are to allocate those funds and how they're going to be utilized.
Thank you.
Okay, having.
Well, your, your, your time is up. We really appreciate your comments. Thank you so much. Next, we'll move to Richard Jesse.
Good evening, my name is Richard Jesse, and my address is on file. I'm also Mrs. Jessie's husband. I've heard members say, saying that they don't want to support the naming of a school after people. The main reason stated is that it's too controversial. I agree with you that it is emotional and trying. However, don't use this as a reason not to name a school after a person. Each of you are aboard, on the board because of the controversy. You ran a political race to defeat someone else in primary for your party, and then later in the general election. I can assure you that your party and the voters had to make several controversial decisions last year or several years ago when you had an opponent. It is unfair to deserving citizen for you to simply say that you will not name a school after someone because you want to avoid the headaches and the contention. Another reason often given is that what happens if later you have to remove a name? That does happen, but again, there's a good controversial reason that it does. In addition to Confederate leader, leaders named being removed, there are buildings and perhaps schools that have to be removed, for example, for Bill Cosby, when his incident came out. Ensure it don't be a chicken poop. Get some intestinal fortitude, allow people to be considered and not shut out because you don't want to deal with the hassle. Reinforce the rule for naming schools that there should be some significant contribution to the nominee to make, for it made to education. This lead to naming for fallen police officers and firefighters and others. What was a significant contribution that they made? The county police fire department has buildings that, that they may name after these folks. For example, name the building behind McCormick or the new police station or fire building. Man or woman up, and get some intestinal fortitude. Thank you.
Rachel Freeman?
One second. There's Jennifer Gilly, Gilly?
Yes, Ms. Jennifer, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jennifer Gilly. I missed that name on the thing. She's next. My apologies.
That's okay, Dr. Latif, you always forget me, no problem.
Oh, my God, sorry.
My name is Jennifer Gilly, my address is on file. I wanted to put my two cents in the hat about the opening of schools in the fall. One of the biggest complaints that I have and have heard from other parents from the beginning was the word optional. All kids know what it means, and it hurt a lot of us when trying to multitask even more than normal. Note to self, don't tell the kids, especially seniors in high school, that work is optional. I believe you need to have many different focus groups that include parents to help with this process for the fall. Single parents, essential workers, stay at home. Everyone needs to be included in, to voice their concerns of how schools will look. I know more opinions mean more work, but if we don't do this right, it will continue to drag on longer than it needs to. A group of parents of seniors in high school will look vastly different than a group from, of preschoolers or kindergartners in what type of schooling can be done. I think we can all agree, one size will not fit all, and as we have stated for the past four years, we also need to make this equitable. More and more, we are seeing and hearing on the news about the problems lower-income families face in educating from home versus those families that have more resources. Not much has changed from what Parents Who Care have been saying. We need to do this right now. We need parents to be able to speak up and offer ideas and suggestions that may or may not have been considered. Two minutes during a board meeting for 15 citizens in the county is not acceptable. Smaller focus groups can work simultaneously in helping to fix the problem. Parents and teachers from each grade level can meet to plan how that level can succeed. Even bus drivers and parents can work together to figure out how to get everyone to and from school. Families from both sides of the county need to be able to speak up with their needs because those might be vastly different as well. I know this is what the board members are for, to speak up for their constituents, but in this case, parents need to have the option to join a meeting and speak up for themselves. Use our resources. Parents want to get back to work, and many want to try and help figure out a way to get children back at school. You all don't have all the answers, but maybe some of the rest of us in the county can help solve the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilly. Thank you, Ms. Gilli. We'll move on to Rachel Freeman.
My name is Rachel Freeman. My information is on record. I'm also a member of the Parents Who Care group. I have three points I'd like to briefly go over with all of you concerning the reopening of schools. First, I believe we need a top-down, not a site-based system for any online or reduced face-to-face instruction learning. My two youngest children are twins. They attend a wonderful elementary school with fantastic teachers. However, they would have different times and days for Zoom calls. The duration of the calls would be different as well. My middle and high schoolers would also encounter similar situations with their classes. You can only imagine the chaos at my house on a daily basis. Second, I would hope and expect for the board to set politics aside and prioritize our children's success first. And lastly, equity. Unfortunately, there will be no plan that will achieve perfect equity for every student, but there can be a plan that optimizes our finite resources. We need to be realistic about our limitations during this time. The school community must be diligent in figuring out pragmatic solutions to our current set of challenges. Thank you. I'm done.
Next, I will go to a couple folks that were, we missed in the citizen comment time due to technical difficulties from the public hearing. And so, Jason, go ahead and let us know. Who's the first one you have in the queue?
Mr. Chairman, the first one in the queue is Ms. Evelyn Brumar.
Okay, Ms. Evelyn Brumar, please.
Hi, School Board. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm here to talk about the proclamation that you're going to be issuing today and voting on. And first I want to tell you that I am the executive director of a nonprofit here in Princeville County called Casa Brumar Foundation. And what we do here is we advocate for LGBTQ youth and the community in general. Right now, we have a COVID relief fund that we're distributing to ages 18 to 25 and these are the kids who have just recently left your school system. So, just to inform you really quick that out of, out of all the LGBTQ youth we have helped since April 14th, April 4th of this, till yesterday, 34% of them have been Princeville County cases because we help all of the kids in LGBTQ community in Northern Virginia. The oldest age is 20 years of age. That means that they graduated from Princeville County Schools no more than two years ago. Half of the 34% are, are on their own, working and trying to get through, through college without a family and without a fully supportive community. So, having this resolution passed and for the kids that are still in your school system will mean a lot because that will develop a supportive, support system that they might not have access to and that they can build off of when they leave your school system and go out into, into the colleges here in Princeville County or outside of the county. So, we're still taking care of our kids after the fact that they leave your school. So, just to remind you all that we have a couple bills going through that are going to affect the school system. So, conversion therapy is not, is going to be illegal from ages 18 and below. And then there's other stuff. I see my time running down. But what I wanted to say is that the laws are going to change July 1st. It's going to be a more inclusive county and more inclusive Commonwealth and I can see that you guys are gearing up and getting ready to adjust for those laws and this proclamation is a step in the right direction. So, I fully support it and thank you so much for bringing it up for a vote.
Okay, Mr. Stevens, do you have any more?
Mr. Chairman, we have one more. Ms. Michelle Lore. I believe the last name is pronounced. I'm going to unmute your microphone.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you so much for your time. My name is Michelle, Shandell Michelle Lore. I go by Michelle, my middle name. And this is my first time, excuse me, I'm sorry, and also my address is on file. So, this is my first time being able to participate in a board meeting just because of childcare and work. So, I just want to say thank you for allowing us to still have this virtual meeting spot. So, I have lived in Prince William County since 1999 and I've been a homeowner since 2002. I would like to ask the board to consider looking into the transfer procedures regarding special education students who live in one boundary but may be best served in another boundary. We have been told by deputies and leaders at the Kelly Leadership Building that it is boundaries and boundaries alone that determine where a special education student is going to go. They have said that it is not the individual needs of the child, it is the boundaries that are considered. And if the particular school that they're bound to go to, their home-based school, is not a good match for that child, it would have to be found out through a traumatic experience or trial and error for that special education student at their base school before a transfer can be approved. As a mother of two special education students, there, I have two boys who are on the autism spectrum. I find that very disturbing and I would again implore the board, I've already contacted Dr. Latif and Ms. Diane, but I would implore the board to look into this further for other parents who have special education students and their children would be best served in another boundary. Thank you. I yield my time.
Okay, Mr. Stevens.
That was all that we have, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, Mr. Stevens, thank you for helping us get through these technical issues and concerns. Next, we're going to move to 1701, the appointment and announcement of the student representatives. This item is on for action. I think I'll turn this over to Dr. Walts. Is, do I, so I guess Lori, do you have a motion to read for me on this?
I certainly do. At this time, I move that the Prince William County School Board appoint Mr. Ben Kim from Stonewall Jackson High School and Carolyn Silver from Hilton High School as the student representatives to the Prince William County School Board and appoint Ms. Ashley Menenjar, Menenjar, excuse me, Ashley, if I mispronounce your name, from the Wood, from Woodbridge High School as the alternate student representative to the Prince William County School Board for the 2020-21 school year.
Do I have a second? Ms. Jesse seconds, I see that. And then, Mr. Stevens, just make sure the board members have the ability to unmute if they need it. I'm going to go through the roll call backwards. Ms. Zargarpur, how do you vote? Or well, actually, first off, sorry, my apologies. Do you, is there any discussion?
I have some.
Dr. Wilk? Yes.
Thank you. I think it's pretty clear that I am a huge advocate for student members on the board. So, I am just very excited that we are continuing this program. I so look forward to continuing to serve with Mr. Kim and welcoming our new representatives. I know that they will do an exciting job. Also, just to remind the public, we had started in this past school year, the Student Senate. So, I fully look forward to regular updates from our student representatives as they meet with the Senate. And every school has a representative, every high school, excuse me, has a representative to the Student Senate. So, you look out for, I wish the public to look out for those individuals to be publicly named in the future. And again, I just cannot express how excited I am that we are providing students with a direct voice to the school board. So, thank you, Dr. Latif.
Okay, I'm going to, because it's kind of easy, I have six members on the screen. I'll go to Ms. Jesse, who I saw raised her hand.
I, I also support student representation and I, I also want to compliment Dr. Latif. I saw you yesterday afternoon with students. I think there was a variety of input from various schools. I think that as we look at this reopening, we're going to need some input. The joke, my principal friend and I have is that you haven't lived until you try to keep a mask on a kindergarten because it's not going to. So, I think that as we look at ways to facilitate the reopening and I think there needs to be even more student input and I would like to see a variety of input, not just the student representative on the board, but I'm a strong advocate of student input. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I saw, I thought I saw Ms. Zargarpur's hand go up. Did you have anything to add? Okay, Mr. Wilk, did you have anything to add?
No, I'm good, sir.
Okay. If, if there's no other hand up and no other further discussion, I move, I will go ahead and take the roll call without objection. We will start with Ms. Zargarpur and I'll go backwards alphabetically. Ms. Zargarpur, how do you vote on the student representatives?
I vote yes.
Ms. Zargarpur votes yes. Ms. Lori Williams, how do you vote?
Overwhelmingly yes.
Ms. Williams votes overwhelmingly yes. Mr. Wilk?
I vote no. I'm just kidding. I want to see reactions.
Okay. Mr., so, so how do you vote then, Mr. Wilk?
That's a yes.
Mr. Wilk votes yes. Ms. Wall, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Ms. Wall votes yes. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Dr. Latif, I vote yes. Ms. Jesse, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jesse votes yes. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay. For the students out there, that's Justin Wilk of the Potomac District who joked around about the no, so if you want to toilet paper his house. No, that's a joke, so please don't take that seriously. I don't think that people do that anymore, so that's good. All right, so we'll be moving on to, moving on to next, 18, which is 1801 Student Housing Middle School Attendance Area Recommendations for the 2021-22 Potomac Shores Middle School. I will ask that this item is on for action and so first we will take a motion and I will turn that motion over to Mr. Justin Wilk. If, Jason, you can put Mr. Wilk up on the screen and Ms. Williams up on the screen. Feel free to take me down. And anyone else, you need to, I would keep Ms. Ralston and Ms. Jesse up on the screen as well, if you don't mind. And Mr. Wilk, if, when you see yourself, can you please make the, okay, that's fine. Jason is doing what he can. He's frozen. Okay, Mr., I'm getting texts, so I'm running three different devices, folks, so please accept my apologies for, for that. Mr. Wilk, with your bow tie, please proceed with a motion.
Just real quick, Ms. Ralston, did you have anything you wanted to put in here or no?
Well, after you make the motion, we'll do a discussion, Mr. Wilk.
Sorry, sir. Okay.
Six years on the board, I thought maybe, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm kidding. We're having fun.
Uh, yeah, we got to do something fun. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve Plan 2B, recommended and prepared for Potomac Shores Middle School Boundary Planning Committee, permitting rising eighth graders to remain at their current schools if they provide their own transportation.
And like the second?
Ms. Williams will second the motion. I will now open the floor up for discussion. We'll start with Mr. Wilk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's an honor to share this building, which will be opening with students from the Woodbridge District as well, Ms. Williams. This is going to be a very exciting, state-of-the-art middle school within a beautiful community, Potomac Shores. And I just want to highlight again some of the benefits of this great plan, how it eliminates over 19 portable classrooms. It helps take a significant chunk of rip-ons to enable, again, the elimination of two classrooms there. Saunders takes two small areas of Bevel to offset the absorption of Woodbridge Middle School students. Potomac Shores will take over half of Potomac's area as well of most of Patty Elementary School, again dramatically reducing overcrowding and entirely eliminating eight portable classrooms. Want to look at some other benefits that have been highlighted, some of the things. It keeps an entire entirety of Covington Harper within Potomac Shores, entirety of Swan's Creek, Creek within Potomac Shores. And it also, unlike other plans, keeps Patty Elementary students from being broken within the three schools into two schools. So, those are just some of the reasons. I think it meets most of the qualifications of what we're looking at with boundaries, the best, I think, to our abilities and I want to thank the Boundary Planning Committee for the work that went into this. I believe the vote was 10-2 from that committee to support Plan 2B and so I'm very excited for this and I'm very excited about my colleagues who, you know, we have all, again, had some great discussion, one-to-one, about, you know, looking at these boundaries. So, I, I, very, a very productive and peaceful process that, again, working again with Ms. Williams and myself to come together and create Plan 2B. So, thank you. I yield to remain here my time.
Okay, wonderful. I will go around the screen here of what I see and then we'll go to the members off the screen. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to echo Mr. Wilk's comments. Very well put. I also would just like to add that I'm extremely pleased with the level of collaboration by the entire board. It was very integral in making this boundary process run as smoothly as I've ever participated in a boundary process. They're usually very tumultuous type of events. I am so very pleased that everyone who wanted to voice, to, to make their voice heard, was heard, whether it's members of the public or board members, the planning department, who I can't think enough for hosting the public meetings and being very responsive to board members and citizen concerns. I am very pleased that we are keeping our promise to the public when it concerns Woodbridge Middle School and Fred Lynn, specifically Woodbridge, as we announced a few years ago when we decided that Potomac Shores was going to be opening. We held a public meeting at Woodbridge and informed the community that the design boundaries we expected to have would eliminate overcrowding on the eastern end and push it further south, allowing for students to have a little bit more room in school. I think we've done a very good job at that and while nothing is ever going to be perfect, I do really think that this is the best boundary plan for everybody involved. And again, I'm just so pleased at the level of collaboration and cooperation by everyone involved in this process. I think it's really going to make a difference in students' lives and I'm proud of the board and the division for supporting a new, modernized school. It's something that I've been pushing for, for a few years and I'm so excited that not only my students and students in my district will be able to attend, but we're, we're going to have quite a bit of overlap from other districts. So, I'm excited to, to hear how students react to the building and their new learning environment. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Next, we'll move to Ms. Diane Ralston.
Oh, nothing.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ralston. We'll move to Ms. Jesse.
Good evening. I want to thank Justin Wilks and Lori Williams because it was mainly your districts. I want to thank you for listening to the concerns from parents of Rockledge. And I, I just congratulate the parents in Rockledge because at the last minute, we were able to get the plan and earlier a gentleman said he was married to me, he's Mr. Jesse. I'm married to Mr. Jesse. He was part of the group that helped us come up with the plan and I, I just, again, Mr. Beavers and Mr. Cardlett, I just want to congratulate you because at the last minute, you listened to us. I think that we've worked on plans together before, but it's a great deal of work and it is perhaps the most pleasant planning I've ever done. And Justin, I've visited Potomac Shores. I've been there before, but decided to look at the school. It's gorgeous and there are, I had no idea how many people are in Potomac Shores. So, you're right, down the road, we're going to have to look at the crowded aspect, but thank you very much. The people in the Okaquan District are very, very pleased with Plan 2B. Thank you.
Okay, next, I'm going to go to Ms. Zargarpur.
Here, let me see if you can get me back on here. There we go. Um, I'll make this quick. You know, when I was watching the boundary process from last year with Okaquan and with Stonewall and the 13th High School, there were a lot of things that went on and, and boundaries can be a very, they're very emotional and people. And people, rightfully so, are thinking about their children and their children's future. And I was amazed that this process this time was just very well thought out. Not amazed, I shouldn't say it like that, but I really appreciate how well thought out everything was and all the work that Justin and Lori did in getting their constituents' needs and the committee's work and the staff's work. So I just... Just very, very... Lots of very positive things that went on through this whole process that made it so much easier, I think, this time.
Thank you, Ms. Zargarpur. We will next move to Ms. Adele Jackson of the Brentsville District.
I'm thankful for all the emails we got in support of primarily 2B. And I'm also thankful for the process. Sorry. For the process thus far and for the collaboration with the school board. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Next, we'll hear from Jennifer Wall of the Gainesville District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank all of the members of the Boundary Committee for their hours of service poring over these maps and charts. I know it's not an easy job, but they did a great job. And they've done it fantastically. I wanted to just say something to all of the families who are affected by this change or all of these changes. I know changes like this are hard, especially if your child or children are being moved. Boundary revisions are never perfect, and there are always going to be families that aren't happy with the way that it is happening. So I please know that we do try to please as many people as possible and that we're aware that it's not going to be... There may be some people for whom this is not their first choice. But I do want to add, from my own experience with a middle school boundary change when a child of mine was in sixth grade, I just want to share a couple of words of advice. It will be okay. Old friends will still be friends, and new friends will be discovered. And children are resilient. And we, as adults, can help foster that resiliency and teach them how to adjust to change. And that was my experience. And my children were able to find some best new friends. So I just want to leave that little bit of hope out there for anybody who is listening who may not be happy with this change. We have dedicated teachers and staff at all of our schools, and they will be in good hands, whatever their new school is. So thank you to the members of Boundary Committee for your hard work and to our very competent professional planning staff, Mr. Cardledge, Mr. Beavers, and others for such a great online portal. And the technology has just advanced this whole process tenfold. It's wonderful. And so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Boy, I think I went through everybody. So I'll be last. It's always hard to follow some of these really lovely comments and important points made by my board members. I would echo all of them and say I thank the Boundary Committee for the work they did, our staff. And really, I thank the members for really spending a lot of time working on these boundaries, massaging them, and doing what you can to really address the community concerns. So if there's no further discussion, I will move to the vote. Any further discussion? Okay. As seeing none, we will call the vote. I'll continue in the reverse alphabetical order tonight. Ms. Lisa Zargarpur, how do you vote on the... The motion?
Boundary 2B.
Yeah, so let me be clear. Justin, did you make the... My screen just died on me here, but it's 2B, right, is the motion? Correct?
I took that motion that was in the board docs and just added 2B as the motion.
Yes. Okay. So the motion, and that's a good point, and I'm looking at it on my board doc screen. It does say 2B. And just to be clear, Debbie Urban, are you there? This motion that we're voting on says 2B in the motion, correct?
Yes, that is correct. I added the words 2B.
Okay.
Plan 2B. Yes, sir.
Just for clarification, because this is really important, can you reread your motion with the wording 2B in there one more time?
Yes, sir. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve Plan 2B recommendations prepared by the Potomac Shores Middle School Boundary Planning Committee and permitting rising eighth-grade students to remain at their current schools if they provide their own transportation. So I simply basically took the words one of the Boundary Plan recommendations and made it Plan 2B.
Okay, excellent. So for clarification, I will take the roll call to support Plan 2B as the motion is directed and made by the Potomac District member, Justin Wilk. Ms. Zargarpur, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Ms. Zargarpur votes yes. Ms. Lori Williams of the Woodbridge District, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Ms. Williams votes yes. Ms. Wall, Gainesville, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Ms. Wall votes yes. Ms. Ralston, the Absco, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Latif, I vote yes. Ms. Jessie, Okaquan District, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes. Ms. Adele Jackson, Brentsville, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson votes yes. That is unanimous for Plan 2B for the boundaries for the new Middle School.
I think it was assumed that I was voting for it, but I don't think you called.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I skipped your name. I'm so sorry. You know, you talked too... That's great. Okay, great. Excellent. Mr. Justin Wilk of the Potomac District, how do you vote?
I vote yes. Thank you.
Mr. Wilk votes yes. That does make it now a unanimous vote for the boundaries and for student housing for the Potomac Shores Middle School. Thank you all for that effort. Next, we'll be moving on to 18.02. Yes, this is... Okay, this is... Yeah, student housing on the elementary school attendance area recommendations for 1920 for Mullen and Chris Young Elementary. There were some small adjustments made here to this. I need a motion. I will ask, Jason, if you could put on Ms. Wall and Ms. Jackson and Ms. Zargarpur, that would be great. And I will take a motion from Ms. Jackson, if you're ready for a motion. Can you unmute? Unmute.
Sorry. I move that the Prince William County School Board approves the proposed Mullen and Chris Young attendance area boundaries effective immediately as presented in the report of attendance area recommendations prepared by the Office of Facilities Services.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Jen Wall seconds. And then I will take... We'll open the floor for discussion in this matter. Any... Let me just go around, because it's just easier, so I don't miss anybody like I did last time. We'll start with Ms. Zargarpur. Any comments?
Um, no.
Very good. Ms. Williams?
No comments. Thank you.
Mr. Wilk?
I'm good, sir.
Ms. Wall?
I will just add the comment that this is a very small change. It increases our transportation efficiencies. The way that the development is being developed, it incorporates all of the houses in the development... I can't think of the name of it off the top of my head. I'm drawing a blank. Into the attendance area for Chris Young, and that's where they were already planned to go. Just the way that the parcel planning process happened, this one little part of the neighborhood was cut off. So it corrects that and aligns with the boundaries that were expected in the beginning. So I think it's a good change.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wall. Ms. Ralston?
Yes.
Okay, so great. Ms. Jessie? No, you were muted, Ms. Jessie, but I think you said you...
Yeah, no comment.
Okay. Ms. Jessie had no comment, and then Ms. Jackson spoke. Ms. Jackson, do you have any comments about this discussion?
I just echo what Ms. Wall said. After attending the boundary and following up with the community leaders, it appears the community supports this proposal. And I thank everybody for their collaboration.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. And thank you, Ms. Jackson and Ms. Wall, for working on this. I really appreciate it. This is a good adjustment that I'll also be supporting. I will go ahead. If there's no further discussion, I will take the roll call again in reverse alphabetical order. Ms. Zargarpur, how do you vote on this motion?
I vote yes.
Ms. Zargarpur votes yes. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Williams votes yes. Mr. Wilk?
I vote yes.
Ms. Wilk votes yes. Ms. Wall of Gainesville?
Yes.
Ms. Wall votes yes. Ms. Ralston?
Yes.
Latif, I vote yes. Ms. Jessie?
Yes.
And Ms. Jackson of the Brentsville District?
Yes.
And they have voted yes. That resolution will pass unanimously for the adjustments in that boundary for 18.02. We will now move on to 19.01, school naming 13th High School. Just for clarification for everyone, Ms. Jackson will be bringing a motion to the table here, and then there will be an impending resolution that I believe Ms. Wall and Ms. Zargarpur will read, and then we will open the floor for discussion. So I will take a motion from Ms. Adele Jackson of the Brentsville District.
I move that the Prince William County School Board name 13th High School, Gainesville High School, name the Gainesville High School Library and Media Center in honor of Officer Ashley Marie Gunden, name the Student Services Center at Osborne Park High School in honor of Ms. Lillian Orlick, and adopt the proposed formal resolutions for each. And there are three resolutions.
Okay. Good. Go ahead, Ms. Jackson.
Okay. Whereas the Prince William County Public Schools is among the largest school divisions in the nation and the second largest in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and whereas the school division is adding the 13th High School to our community of excellent schools, and whereas the Prince William County School Board believes that our community should be proud of all our schools, and whereas the school board believes that our high schools bring accolades and positive attention to our community and to our county as a destination place to raise a family, and whereas the school board strongly believes that the names of our towns and communities should be recognized as such, and whereas the Gainesville community has a longstanding historical presence in Prince William County and in recent years has increased population and economic and cultural significance, now therefore be it resolved on this 10th day of June 2020 that the Prince William County School Board name the 13th High School Gainesville High School. And then I default to Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Ms. Wall.
Okay. I have a resolution then for naming the Library and Media Center at Gainesville High School in honor of Officer Ashley Marie Gunden. Whereas PWCS wishes, when naming the Gainesville High School, to also recognize the specific service contributions of two community members who have provided our community with outstanding examples of selfless dedication and service to their fellow community members. And whereas Prince William County Police Officer Ashley Marie Gunden was a bright, caring, loving, and kind young woman who was committed to public service. And whereas Officer Gunden participated in the JROTC program in high school and volunteered extensively in helping others in her community through the suicide prevention program. And whereas Officer Gunden, in demonstrating tremendous courage and strength, left a powerful testament to our community. Her legacy of service, her youth, and her steadfast commitment to serve and help others provided a very real connection to our young people and our public schools. And whereas Officer Gunden embodied the very finest traits of leadership and service, a sense of honor, duty, and community. And whereas Officer Gunden, while serving her first day of duty for the Prince William County Police Department, made the ultimate sacrifice for her community when, at the age of 28, she was killed in a line of duty in February 2016 while responding to a domestic violence call. Now therefore be it resolved, this 10th day of June 2020, that the Prince William County School Board name the Library and Media Center at Gainesville High School in honor of Officer Ashley Marie Gunden.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Ms. Zargarpur?
This is a resolution naming the Student Services Center at Osborne Park High School in honor of Lillian Orlick. Whereas Lillian Orlick provided a lifetime of continuous contribution to the education of students in Prince William County. And whereas Lillian Orlick served as a teacher and counselor for 64 years at both Osborne High and Osborne Park High Schools. And whereas the PWCS Board, School Board, recognizes the incredible importance counselors play in the mentoring and advising of students and that Lillian Orlick was the gold standard for this work. And whereas Lillian Orlick, or Ms. O., as she was known, was loved by and held in the highest regard by the thousands of young people whose lives she touched. And whereas Lillian Orlick was committed to her students, demanding of excellence, while giving of herself in ways not commonly found in even the best of teachers. And whereas Lillian Orlick served the young people of Prince William County for many decades with enthusiasm and spirit. And whereas Lillian Orlick is spoken of so highly and with such deep respect and is loved by so many in Prince William County as well in many other places. And whereas Lillian Orlick has touched so many people's lives in a positive and meaningful way through her earnest dedication to their success, now therefore be it resolved, this 10th day of June 2010, that the Prince William County School Board name the Student Services Center at... We need to change this. At the Student Services Center at Osborne Park High School?
Yes.
Okay, just double-checking. In honor of Ms. Lillian Orlick. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. There may be a typo there. We will fix that. I will now open the floor for discussion upon hearing those resolutions.
We need a second to the motion.
Right, right. Thanks, Ms. Urban. Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Ms. Ralston seconds, and I saw a number of others. Ms. Wall and Jackson also seconding as well. So we will now open the floor for discussion, and I will start the discussion with those in the district first, and then we'll move out from there. Ms. Jackson?
Um, yes, thank you for everybody today. Thank you to Mr. Beavers and the rest of the Prince William County staff and the board that helped with this collaborative effort. I also want to thank the many constituents who wrote in. This was a very difficult decision. Gainesville is a significant location that deserves a namesake while honoring two remarkable women who the community overwhelmingly supported and loved. Ms. Orlick dedicated over six decades to her students and gave a lifetime to service. The many emails we received detailed a woman whose impact will be felt for generations to come. The emails listed an incredible work ethic and love for those whom she taught or counseled. Ms. Gunden gave her life to service. The many emails I read described a young woman who loved children, community, and country. Her friends and family from near and far reached out, describing a dedicated woman who was brave, kind, and committed to her life and service. And I really appreciate everybody's collaborative effort on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank the community also for the many name suggestions and for their thoughtfulness and creativity. and for their thoughtfulness and creativity. We got a lot of name suggestions, and obviously some very popular ones as well. So it was an inspiring process to be a part of. It's my hope that this new school will add to the already excellent schools in Prince William County. The name of Gainesville will locate this new school in its proper geographic home. It will be yet another outstanding high school in our growing school division, and I, I hope it helps put Prince William County schools on the map. I also am proud to support the naming of the new school media center after Officer Ashley Gwenden. She was an officer of the highest integrity. She lost her life in doing, in serving our community in a very remarkable way, but before losing her life, she was a very distinguished and amazing young woman. So I think this will be quite a great honor to her memory. And my last comments regarding Lillian Orlick, it was the greatest honor for me to read the most touching tributes and personal stories about her. I did not know who she was before this process. I think she's my new favorite person, my new favorite hero. I'm so impressed by her life story. I'm inspired by it. She's just truly a gem, and so I'm very excited to see that her name will be above a counseling student center because that's what she dedicated her life to. And so I hope that every counselor and every student who goes through those doors to give or seek guidance will be reminded of Ms. Orlick and strive to emulate her life's vision and carry on her legacy. And if we do that, if we do that, the world will be a better place. So I feel very pleased to include her in this process as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll go to Ms. Lisa Zargarpur.
Um, I think, uh, I'm the only one on this board who actually had Ms. Orlick as a guidance counselor. I went to Osborne Park, and she was there when I went there, and I ran into her a couple of years ago at a bank, and, and when we were talking, when I gave her my maiden name, she, she actually remembered. She's an amazing person. In recent years, my two older daughters went to Osborne Park and graduated from there, and she was instrumental with the students in their senior year, trying to make sure that they had scholarships or access to their, whatever their plans were, that she was really involved in making sure that they were able to move on with their plans. And I know that even after she retired, she still goes to the school, or she still did. I don't, I don't know if, since we've been in COVID, that's got, that's gotta be a huge impact on her. But I know that even after she retired, she would still go to the school. She would still work on scholarship opportunities for students. So it's, it's, she does leave a huge legacy. Many of us, she helped to make sure that we had a pathway to our futures, and,
Your dog.
Your dog. And it's, it's a really wonderful to be able to name a space after her. She's also, just so, maybe, maybe something that not everyone knows about her, she also loved the arts, and at Osborne Park, the auditorium is also named after her as well. So she's a big supporter of arts. She came to all the concerts when I was in school, and we received some emails and some testimonials of how she continues to show up to all kinds of things. So it was a, it's a really nice way to honor her as a professional, and like Ms. Wall said, the legacy that she leaves behind, may we be able to walk in that path as well. So, thank you.
Um, there's a, there's a, a mo, a point of clarification, because I know there was a question in your, in the resolution, and I know these resolutions were written late. So let me, let me first ask Dave Beavers. Mr. Beavers, can you get on, turn on your mic?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't know. And I know Ms. Zargarpur is on, so this is a question for both of you and for Ms. Jackson, and this may be my fault for sort of overlooking this, because I, before, I didn't, I may have missed it when it went up, but was, are we naming the Counseling Center at Osborne Park or at Gainesville for Ms. Orlick?
I think the intent was to, to name the, the Counseling Center at Osborne Park. I, I did not have an extensive list of the, that showed that we had already named the auditorium there as well. So that's a, a nice coincidence that there are two places.
So, so that being said, and Lisa, that's correct, the auditorium is named after Mr. Orlick already at Osborne Park?
Yes.
Okay, so when, when someone talked to Mr. Beach, I think Ms. Jackson said that he thought we were naming the Counseling Center at the thirteenth high school.
That's what I thought, too. And then when I read this, I thought maybe I mean.
Okay, so, so then there's a mistake then. There's a, there's a mistake there. Mr. Beavers, and that might be between me and you on that, because I may have been confused on that. So Mr. Beach, I don't think he's on the call, but as far as Lisa and Adele, you both know that he's expecting that to be named at the thirteenth high school, correct?
Yes, sir, and I didn't catch it because I didn't notice which. Right, yeah, that was my understanding. Yeah.
Without opposition to that, we should, we should clarify that, so we, because there's already a name at Osborne Park, that this should be at the thirteenth high school for the new Counseling Center.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? Okay, so let's, let's make sure that's in the wording correct. Is the resolution reading that way?
It does read that way, yes. We can change that to Gainesville High School.
Okay, so, so Ms. Urban, just for the, the note that, that, that the Orlick part of the main motion has to read, um, to be named at the Gainesville High School. So both, you, both names are going to be done at the Gainesville High School, and, and I apologize, that is my fault for, for, for missing that in the documents that were uploaded today.
I apologize, I didn't catch it. I was just too busy.
Yeah, yeah. And so, okay, so we, we've heard from Ms. Zargarpur, and Ms. Zargarpur, I threw out all this confusion. I was, I was doing some texting to sort of get to the bottom of this, but did you say and tell everyone you're an alumni of Osborne Park?
I am of Osborne Park, yes.
And, and Ms. Orlick was, was a counselor of yours as well, correct?
Was, yeah. Jacket born and jacket bred, so.
And, and a couple of your children are graduates of Osborne Park as well, is that correct?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so you're giving sort of primary testimony to what you really saw and felt and believe, and so I, we, we all here appreciate that, and that's lovely to know. Next, I will go to, now I'm going to go alphabetically here, Ms.
Excuse me, Dr. Latif?
Yes.
I changed the motion. If you could reread the motion, um, so the public is clear. I changed it to name the Student Services Center at Gainesville High School in honor of Ms. Lillian Orlick. Is that how you wanted it?
That is correct. That is correct. So if you've changed it.
Mr. Chairman, is that a friendly amendment?
That is a friendly amendment. If there's no opposition to that, I please accept the friendly amendment. As seeing no opposition to that, I will accept that as a friendly amendment. Do I, do I need to read that again for clarification? Let me go ahead and read that again. Um, actually, do me a favor. Adele, you might have it right in front of you for some reason. I'm not pulling it up. Read it again with Gainesville as the, instead of OP there.
Okay, that, that, I move that the Prince William County School Board name the thirteenth high school Gainesville High School, name the Gainesville High School Library and Media Center in honor of Officer Ashley Marie Gwenden, name the Student Services Center at Gainesville High School in honor of Ms. Lillian Orlick, and adopt the proposed formal resolutions for each. And then I would note that in one of the proposed formal resolutions, it says twenty-ten instead of twenty-two, twenty.
Okay, so that, that's good. We'll fix that. Wonderful. So we'll go, we'll move around. I'll ask Ms. Williams to go next.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just echo the statements of my board members, and I am really pleased that we are able to honor both of those women who dedicated their lives to one service in uniform and the other to service of the school division and our many, many students. There's nothing that can compare to a, a, a good counselor. I mean, they change lives, and they impact us for the rest of our lives, and it, it goes without saying that there, a fallen officer always deserves to be honored, and Ms. Gwenden's name has come up in the past several school board naming times, and I think that this is a very appropriate way to honor her memory, and that her, her name will continue to live on, and students will see her name and, and know who she is, and have an opportunity to, to discuss the service that she gave as an officer and as a student. So I think that this is fantastic, and I am fully in support of it. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Wall, you already spoke on this matter, or did you not? Okay, great. So then we'll go to Ms. Ralston.
Okay, thank you. I knew her for all of, about two years, and because during that time, I was doing stuff in the county as a big piece. She really, really, was very, very nice and giving. I think that we have to, you know, thank people. I'm, I'm one of those people, you know, thank her and hug her. So, um, I'm, I'm coming out. When, whenever you put up, or whatever you're going to do for her, at its completion, please let me know. Thank you.
Wonderful, Ms. Ralston. Thank you. Mr. Wilk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Wall, Ms. Jackson, for your leadership on this. I would be remiss if I didn't highlight the peaceful nature of this and the collaboration between the two members of that impacted school. Not to say with mine being on the radar, not mine, Ms. Williams and I having the next one, I love the process of the board members coming to us and possibly deferring to what our community wants. So looking forward to walking around to the impacted boundaries with Ms. Williams and I, even if we have to go door to door, to hear what the people want. So thank you, Ms. Wall, Ms. Jackson. I'm happy to defer. We have the Colgan sharks. Looking forward to the Gainesville goldfish.
We don't get to make that decision, but outstanding and poignant, uh, comments.
You like those points, Dr. Latif?
Yeah, no, I, I don't like your point, and some of your points are not likable, but some are fantastic. The fish one is good. We will now go to Ms. Jessie.
Thank you very much. I was glad to see that the resolution changed to Gainesville. I have sent information to Ms. Walls, and I've talked to various people about Lillian Orlick. I've known Lillian Orlick for twenty years. She was instrumental in helping with me with MLK. She was always there. I would meet her in the hallways, and I did a little bit of research on her. She's on the front of NEA today, and it says no plans to retire. And the information I've read about her is that she served as a counselor for parades of siblings and generations of families, sometimes helping grandchildren of students. She counseled early in her career. Her former students became doctors, lawyers, accountants, and landscapers. The man, Hal Parrish, was in associate studies course, and the legend David Robinson, who was a famous basketball player. He would be at her desk at three AM in the morning, and he would open the school, answer the phones, and she took the front desk until the secretary arrived at eight, at seven AM. Uh, she has, she has no living relatives and considers the school system to be her home. And in her words, she planned, she thinks that her cure will be in the auditorium. She planned to die at her desk, but she didn't. I think that sometimes, you know, we look at these high schools and we get into teachers, but our regulations say that we should honor, first priority should be teachers. And here's a lady that's been a teacher for sixty-six years, and I am so pleased to see that her name is going to be on that new building, because it's going to be what I, I used to call a lot of tada. She has to have their tada, and she already has a name at Osborne Park. So here's a lady with sixty-six years of service. I think she deserves to have her name in place. And Mr. Beavers, I want to thank you and your group for helping us with this. Thank you very much, Jennifer, and thank you guys for accepting my recommendation, but I know it was a recommendation from other people also. Thank you very, very much. We, we, we talk about teachers and how we honor teachers, and I think we did something good tonight. Thank you very much.
Um, I, I, I'm going to add that, you know, hundreds of emails came in, and, and if everyone could mute their phones, there's a little bit of background, but, or mute their, whatever you call it, screens. Um, there were hundreds of emails that came in supporting Ashley Gwenden, Ms. Lillian Orlick, for the, the naming of the school, you know, other, you know, there were many alumni from Osborne Park, which just goes to the, to testimonials of how wonderful she was, and, and I think that was very touching, and, and we appreciate the folks who put that in there. There were a number of officials, just, I think it's, it's important to point out, Harry Parrish, the mayor of Manassas City, I think, also voiced and sent a letter on, on behalf of Ms. Lillian Orlick, and so that's important. And I'm going to wrap up by saying that, you know, Ashley, Officer Ashley Gwenden came highly recommended by a number of folks, and, and I spoke a number of times to Chief Barry Bernard, who couldn't say enough good things about this young officer, her honor, her duty, her commitment, her, you know, her record of, of having a high, enormously high level of integrity, and a, and an officer, he said in his words, would be someone that he wished officers would use as a role model. And I think it is the highest testimony that the chief of police who, who oversees their work can say about another officer. And, and so I, I can't tell you how much, I think Chief Bernard was excited about what we're doing, and, and I've asked him to convey the news to the family who I, who, who, who may be watching, but I want everyone to know that the, the school board worked diligently over the last few weeks on this naming. They really wanted to do something that recognized what I think we defined very nicely in the resolution, resolutions, the three resolutions, about each reasons for laying out why we did what we did. I will make my final comment on the naming of the high school overall. I believe that our high schools are incredible high schools. They are destination high schools. They are places where people ought to come and live and choose to come and live because of our high schools, our middle schools, our elementary schools. I believe that one hundred percent. I believe putting the name Gainesville on it, when they go and, and without doubt win statewide awards, people will know that is Gainesville, Virginia. That is Prince William County. And I think, you know, our students are our best public relations. Our efforts of our students and where they go, how they demonstrate themselves to the rest of the state, the Commonwealth, the world, is the best testimony to the work this board does, the school division does, Dr. Walts does, and so I can't thank you enough. And then I'm going to ask Dr. Walts to please comment on, on these names. And if you put Dr. Walts on the screen as well, Mr. Stevens, that would be great. Dr. Walts, can you unmute? Dr. Walts, unmute, sir.
He is unmuted. Something's wrong with his microphone, it looks like.
Is it on our side?
He unjoins and rejoins on his side, I think.
Dr. Walts, we might need you to come off and come back in, maybe. Is your microphone, do you see unmuted? You see it's on, Jason's telling me it's unmuted, but we're not able to hear you. No. Can you, can you sign back in and sign back on, and I'll, we'll make sure you get to, to weigh in on this. Thank you, sir. But as we wait for that, I think if there are, I mean, this is a big issue. It's a big topic, and while we wait, do I have any other comments from other members who may have forgotten to say something they would like? If, if not, I will go ahead and take the vote, and once we're done with the roll call vote, we'll have Dr. Walts weigh in on his thoughts. Any other comments?
Dr. Latif, I just want,
Jessie.
I just want to comment that Mr. Beach, who was also the principal at Osborne Park, I chatted with him, and I knew he couldn't, and he was not going to influence what was going on, but I think he's going to be very pleased to have her with him at that new high school. So, thank you very much.
Ms. Jessie, thank you. Those are really important comments that I'm glad you shared here at the end. Neil Beach, as everyone knows, is the new principal at the Gainesville High School, presumed Gainesville High School, and was an outstanding principal at Osborne Park High School, and I think well-loved as well. And so we look forward to what he's going to be able to help create and innovate over there at that new facility. So let us go ahead and take the roll call. Well, we, we can certainly have Dr. Walts weigh in after the roll call vote. So I will start with, actually, I'll go in order of the district and then sort of back to alphabetical. So I'm going to first, you know, reiterate in short terms, we are voting on the motion to name the thirteenth high school Gainesville High School with the media center after Lillian Orlick and the media council, the counseling center, and, and then all the library. I might say that again. Let me pull that up here. Let me, let me be exact about that. Gainesville High School and the School Library and Media Center after Ashley Marie Gwenden and the Student Services Center in honor of Ms. Lillian Orlick of the new high school. So I will start with Ms. Jackson of the Brentsville District where the high school will be housed. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson votes yes. Ms. Jennifer Wall of the Gainesville District, who the school will be named after.
I vote yes.
Ms. Jennifer Wall votes yes. Ms. Lisa Zargarpur, who's an alum of OP and has a vested interest in this as well, Ms. Zargarpur?
I vote yes.
Ms. Zargarpur votes yes. Next, we will go to, I'll just go in order here, Ms. Jessie, who always speaks highly of our counselors and teachers. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie of the Ocwen District votes yes. Ms. Jessie of the Ocwen District votes yes. Ms. Ralston of the Neavsgo District, thank you for sharing your comments about her. How do you vote?
She's unmuted.
Can you unmute Ms. Ralston?
Okay, yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Mr. Wilk, with too much information, how do you vote?
While following the sirens in the back of Ms. Ralston, I vote yes.
Yes. Mr. Wilk votes yes. Ms. Lori Williams, vice chair and Woodbridge District Representative, how do you vote, Ms. Lori Williams?
I vote yes, sir.
Ms. Lori Williams votes yes. That is a unanimous vote for the new high school, 13th High School, to be named Gainesville High School, and with the centers in the buildings named after Officer Ashley Marie Gwenden and Ms. Lillian Orlick. And now, Dr. Walts, after that unanimous vote, we are glad to have you back. And please tell us a little bit about your feelings about what we just did, and your thoughts. Thank you, sir. Can you unmute? I don't know. Jason, where are we here?
Mr. Chairman, he's not muted on our side. He's having technical difficulties, I believe, on his side.
So can we get someone to call into Dr. Walts' and do a little troubleshooting on that side? And we will certainly have time for Dr. Walts to make some comments. I will say that the weather continues to be challenging here. So Jason, can you take him off the screen, help him out, or have someone troubleshoot that system? And then we will move on to, well, he is at superintendent's time, so we will certainly need him for that. So let's move on to 21. And Mary, this is okay to be moving down the order here, okay? Is that correct, Ms. McGowan?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McGowan. So for staff members online, we're going to move to 2101, which is the board update on virtual access to dual enrollment and other courses. I had asked this to be brought on for information. I think it's important to, for the Prince William County School Board to receive information from the superintendent staff on the availability of online courses, summer classes, and other PWCS community and state learning opportunities for our students as we struggle through this pandemic. I will probably turn it over to probably Ms. Goss here, I think, if you're there, Ms. Rita.
This is Ken Bassett. Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, sure. Ken Bassett, that would be great. And if you have a slide presentation, Jason, please put it up on the screen for us.
Good evening, Chairman Latif and school board members, Dr. Walts. Mrs. Goss is attending a regional meeting this evening on reopening schools in the fall. So I'll be sharing the learning opportunities that Dr. Latif just mentioned on behalf of her and my colleagues in IT and OSMAP offices.
Sir, please proceed. Jason, can you get the slide presentation up?
Do you not have a slide presentation for him?
Oh, we don't?
So folks at home can find it on the board agenda if they're looking for it, but...
Okay, for members, it's on your board docs under 2101. And then Ken, I guess if you just go through it, and can we, well, let's commit to making this available to the community on our website tomorrow morning.
We can do that, yes, sir.
Okay, so go ahead and do that. And Jason, if you somehow can get it from Ms. Urban while we're going through this, that would be fabulous.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Bassett, please, take it.
Thank you, sir. So there are five basic opportunities that I wanted to share with folks in the community around virtual schooling options for this summer and the fall of 2020. The first is the Prince William County Schools Summer School. My colleague, Dara Dugger, is on the call this evening as well. And she and her staff are operating that virtual program for this summer. I'll talk about that in just a few minutes. Virtual Prince William, which is our own version of an online education program available to our students. It also is running summer programs and offerings in the fall. Virtual Virginia, which is a statewide virtual schooling program. And we also have some approved non-Prince William County course options that I'd like to share with you and the public this evening. Some of those are some expansion efforts that we've undertaken in light of what we've seen with COVID-19, to make sure that families have lots of options for flexible opportunities to accrue new learning opportunities during the fall and summer. And then, of course, we have our fall high school courses, which we'll briefly touch on as well. There we are. I see the presentation. Thank you. We'll go to the second slide here on the Prince William County Schools Summer School. We have an elementary and middle school program that runs July the 26th, I'm sorry, July 6th through 24th. That's a 15-day program. You can see the registration deadline is fast approaching. For more information on it, as well as the English Language Learners High School Academy that runs June 22nd through July 31st, and Operation Graduation Grad Academy, which is currently open for seniors only, it also has a registration deadline that is rapidly approaching. So if folks would like more information about that, they can visit Prince William County Schools homepage and look up summer school, and you'll find all the information that you need about those opportunities. Again, act quickly. That's something that you're interested in because the deadline for registration is June 12th. Next slide, Virtual Prince William. This is a program run by colleague Brett Hellman. Brett is our director of the Virtual Prince William Program. It's an excellent program that we've had for over a decade. Prince William County's been a leader in this area for quite some time. These are excellent courses that are taught by Prince William County teachers. And what I would like for the community to know is that these opportunities provide the highest level of support for our students in an online format. And I say that because they're taught by our teachers. So you've got someone on the other end of the line there who is very much invested in the community that they serve and in our kids in a way that's unique and quite powerful. It will be utilizing the Canvas Learning Management Platform. They've made that transition. The deadline for their registration for summer sessions is also rapidly approaching. You can see that's June 15. There is tuition fees associated for the summer classes. So students who are interested in taking those during the summer can incur a tuition fee. But I can tell you that it's a tremendous value in terms of what you get for the money with the level of support that's provided and the quality of instruction. Tuition for that same school's program is free during the course of the school year. That was something that was introduced to being in this year and something that a lot of students have taken advantage of. And Ms. A.J. Phillips, I believe, is also on the call this evening, and she supervises Mr. Hellman and their team, and they do fantastic work. Our next slide is the Virtual Virginia Program. This is the statewide program I mentioned earlier. You can see the web address on this slide here for folks who are interested in more information about it. It also is taught by Virginia licensed teachers, follows very closely the Virginia standards of learning curriculum. This program also provides a level of support that's important for moms and dads and students to understand. Kids who take these courses have to have a mentor that's assigned to them. And that mentor helps ensure, and this is particularly important for students who are in their first online course. Sometimes we have really high-performing students who do really well in a face-to-face setting, but the level of independence, organization, and sort of stick-to-itiveness, if you will, is necessary for success in the online environment, can pose challenges to even some of our strongest students. So having a mentor in this capacity is very helpful, and this program does require it. They also utilize the Canvas Learning Management Platform, which our division has recently adopted. Deadline for that is also rapidly approaching, June 17. There's a tuition fee associated with it. And for more information, you can visit virtualvirginia.org. Next slide. We've expanded the options that are available to students through non-Prince William County or Virginia State-operated providers. So the Virginia General Assembly obviously requires that schools that are part of the Virginia Council for Private Education, we accept those credits universally through our schools. What's new this year, and as a result of COVID-19 and our closures, is that we've dramatically increased the providers that are available for families to consider through this www.learn24va.org site. This is operated by the Virginia Department of Education, where they host multiple vendors who provide for fee online learning opportunities for students to take. This is a caveat or sort of situation, a buyer beware. There's a lot of information that the state provides on this site about the completion rates associated with these programs. So I encourage families to look at those summary reports. If you're interested in taking advantage of one of these opportunities, please make sure that you consult with your professional school counselor. I appreciated the kind remarks that folks were sharing about the importance of counselors earlier tonight. Those folks do an invaluable job of making sure that they review a student's academic career plan when they make these decisions. A student who might be signing up for a summer class with one of these vendors would want to make sure that we are going to have them properly scheduled for their classes in the fall, because any courses that they might take this summer obviously may change the courses that they need later. And so it's much more convenient for us to make sure that we've had those conversations before school starts, and they've received their schedules and after. And they'll make sure that they're taking a course that will be recognized for credit. Those require prior authorization from their school principal. That's a new process for folks this year. So, you know, work with them as they go through that process. But if you're interested, this is a new option that's available. And there are well over a dozen different providers here, and lots and lots of courses. Next slide. This is not new, but something that maybe a lot of families don't know as much about. Northern Virginia Community College offers courses for students who meet their admissions requirements. So again, just was with the last, the last slide, the last option, it's really important for folks to have a conversation with their professional school counselor to make sure that they follow the procedures for the community college. Our staff can put them in touch with the right people at the Northern Virginia Community College. They have a variety of different course options that are available. Some of those options are available for credit for both high school and college credit. Others are just college credit only. Students in either option are starting their college transcripts. They want to be sure that they're doing their absolute dead-level best when they begin these courses, because it stays on their permanent record. And that's something that they want to be sure of. Again, registration for summer students at Nova began on April 13. You'll want to visit their website for information on their summer terms. They have a variety of different deadlines, depending on the programs or courses you're interested in. So it really is very specific to the program or courses you're interested in. You can find out more about that at nbc.edu. And there is tuition involved with participating in those courses as well. Finally, the last slide that I have here for you is the high school courses, including dual enrollment courses that are available in the fall of 2020. And at this time, we still have plans to offer all of those courses that are in that catalog that students have registered for, and we have sufficient enrollments to run in the fall. And that includes dual enrollment courses that are listed in that course catalog. Those are our summer options available to families in Prince William County for this fall and over the summer. Thank you.
Mr. Bassett, that was a great presentation. Can you go back a couple slides? I'm going to sort of take the floor with a couple of quick questions first off, and then I'll let the rest of the board. So please stay on, because that slide exactly, the Virginia Council for Private Education, so that lists all sorts of approved private institutions offering online classes, mostly probably for some, they're charging for that, some might be more expensive than less, that are approved by the Virginia State, the Virginia VDOE. Is that correct?
These are, yes. These are courses that are provided by vendors who go through a process where they apply with the Virginia Department of Ed. And then they have a vetting process that they use to determine that the course content is sufficiently aligned to count for credit towards Virginia coursework.
And we're going to give them credit in our division as well for that.
That's correct. Yes, sir. But it's really, it's very important that they have that conversation with their counselor before they register for any of those classes, to be certain that they don't make a mistake. That could be an expensive mistake.
Sure. And then the other point is, some of those offer, my understanding is, some of those programs are offering for the summer, but also through the year. Is that correct?
They are, yes. They are offered during the course of the year as well.
If somebody wanted to do that. So, Mr. Bassett, do you know if that organization or the www.learn24va.org lists K through eight vendors who are providing maybe online opportunities for students that, for example, that are struggling with the pandemic, that may not come back in the fall or whatever reasons? Do you know that? Or is this only for high school credit organizations?
No, there are other options. And I should add, too, that the Virtual Virginia Program is adding K through eight options as well for the fall. They're in the process of developing those as well.
So a private sort of, like, I've seen some, you know, I've gotten emails of private preschools and folks in our community who are interested in, you know, being listed as a resource. Would they go to, are those private preschool or, you know, first, second grade pre-K or, you know, K through eight? Could they go to that website? And so could I find those organizations on the website as well, or are the organization VDOE is putting together, you know?
There is some information related to that. A person might also be interested in taking a look if they're thinking about an alternative to public school, which is, I think, what you're describing at the Virginia Council for Private Education.
Yeah. So I'm looking more at the idea of maybe families or students who may be supplementing what we're also giving them. If, you know, just like the high school, they can get credit. I don't know if those opportunities exist, but thank you for answering that. And thank you for putting this together. Thank you, Dr. Walts, for getting this information out to us. I'm going to go around the room on this. I know Ms. Williams had a question, so I'm going to actually start with Ms. Williams first. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Chairman Latif. So first, I'd like to start with a request. I think that it's really imperative that we communicate this on all levels to our community. So I'm wondering if IT could specifically tweet about each individual slide and maybe post a link in the tweet along with the grade levels that it applies to, so that students can find the information easily. Any parents who are on Twitter regularly are also made aware of the information. For example, it would say, "Non-PWCS-approved options link applies K through 12." I've been hearing a lot of feedback from students about navigating information, and with respect especially to our students who translate information to their parents. So I think that that's a very accessible way for them to, an easily digestible way for them to understand what we're saying, and then pass that information along to their parents as well. I did want some clarification. So we have two slides on dual enrollment. The first slide for Northern Virginia Community College, and then a second one that says high school dual enrollment. So if, Mr. Bassett, if you could just reiterate for clarity, the first slide for dual enrollment, is that specifically just for the summer? Or is that all year long? And if it is all year long, what is the difference between that and the high school courses for dual enrollment?
So during the summertime, dual enrollment opportunities would be those courses that we have, that we offer in a mutual agreement with Northern Virginia Community College and that they recognize for both high school and college credit, that they teach on their campus. And the fall offerings are ones that we call contract dual enrollment. Those are courses that are taught by Prince William County teachers that are adjunct faculty for Nova. And those classes don't cost our students anything in terms of tuition. Those dual enrollment courses do not. The courses that students might take on campus during the summertime, they do incur a tuition cost, and they take them with the Nova campus and with their faculty at their facilities. So does that answer your question, Ms. Williams?
Yeah, thank you. I think it's just, you know, I got a little confused. I know folks at home watching who are even less familiar, they probably got a little confused too, because the slides are back to back. So I just wanted to make sure that we repeated that information for them. And then my other question is related to... And then my other question is related to dual enrollment again, because normally in a traditional school setting, students sign up for dual enrollment. We have a teacher on site and it's capped at the limit of students who are able to fit in the class. Is there any opportunity, since we're embarking on this brave new world of virtual learning and definitely won't be able to have school classrooms at capacity, is there any opportunity now to maybe open up our fall dual enrollment, since it will probably majority be online? Or are we giving any consideration to that? So for example, I know that some schools don't have a dual enrollment course that like maybe a lot of kids would like to take, but because they're not zoned for that school or the class is already filled. Is there any possibility that we are able to offer additional dual enrollment classes virtually going into the fall that maybe weren't offered before? Or is it too late to do something like, has there been any thought to that? And then the second part of that question is, if we are going to do it online, could we make that a permanent option as we move forward? And how that looks, and of course, you don't have to give all the answer to that all right now, because I know that it's not just your responsibility to answer that. But if we could consider that, or if you have any information related to those questions, I'd love to hear it with further updates later.
Yeah, I think I can answer those questions with the information I have at this time. The first part of your question, students who are enrolled in dual enrollment courses for the fall of this upcoming semester. One of the things that's been really good about our collaboration with Northern Virginia Community College is that our core, our teachers who are teaching those dual enrollment classes have already been using the Canvas platform with our dual enrollment students as part of their coursework. There, there's no reason why that won't continue with our fall opening. And so they were in a position this past spring and they will continue to be in the position this fall to continue those courses in the same way that they, that they have throughout the course of the fall. So throughout the course of the spring, rather. So I don't think that we have to worry about students who had signed up for those courses expecting to take them, not having a successful opportunity to fulfill that, you know, that desire. With regard to taking courses online and having kids enrolled directly for those programs with Nova, that, that's going to be a little bit more challenging, because we've actually broached that subject with Nova to see if we could expand our dual enrollment offerings to what they used to call their E L I courses, or Extended Learning Institute courses that were online. And we've, we've not been able to work out terms for how that would, how that would work. So we, we're not in a position to be able to do it yet, I guess, is what I can tell you. But it is something that we're in conversation with them about. I do not believe it's something that we would be able to have in place for the fall of this year. But we will be able to provide the dual enrollment courses that students have requested in this past spring when they did their schedules, just as we always have.
Thank you, Mr. Bassett. I really appreciate all the work you do on behalf of the students with our classes, the, excuse me, the handbook for courses, your continued advocacy to further expand our diversity of courses we offer students. I think a lot of parents don't know too, that it's often challenging to find those dual enrollment teachers. And actually to have them go through the year, there's a lot of challenges with that. I experienced that myself as a parent. But I do recognize that it is something that we continue to strive. I appreciate your advocacy on behalf of our students to expand the program, because we're hearing a lot of students who want to sign up for dual enrollment classes and they aren't always offered where their attendance area is. And I think this board is definitely made a commitment to equity and it's good to hear that you're already on top of that. Just this morning, I had a conversation with a citizen who expressed the same thing, being able to provide those classes across a platform. So it's good to know that it's not just our school division engaged in this conversation, that Nova is a participant at the table and that we're already thinking about these things. And the last thing I have, it's only, is, so Dr. Walts, excuse me, Dr. Latif touched a little bit on the resources for outside firms. Is that something that maybe Spark, or I don't know if you're the appropriate question, person to ask this question to, can also have a link to as well as we do on our website for these courses for parents? Because I think this pandemic has just really turned a corner on how we review education and what parents are, can and feel they need to do for their students. So do you, do you know the answer to that, sir?
In terms of being able to share this information to the, yeah, I mean, I think that we can work with our communication colleagues and have this posted for folks to be able to see it. And I heard the other suggestion about Twitter, and that's certainly something we can do too.
Thank you. That's all I have. I really appreciate your time. And again, all that you do for our students.
Thank you. Very kind. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. I'm going to go to Ms. Wall, because she had some questions earlier for me today on this, and then we'll go round robin.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Bassett. I, my concern, I love all of these options and thank you so much for this presentation. I would like to find a way, make this information more accessible. Because, you know, for our really, you know, high level learners or maybe people who with a lot of initiative, they can hunt around and find it. But for people who, just to work on that equity aspect of it, to make it more accessible and more easy to find, I, I'm not sure if, I mean, I've never really searched around our website, but this, this learn twenty four Virginia dot org website, can we have that, can we link to that directly in a really obvious way? Can we have like a central repository of resources for all of these dual enrollment, but not just dual enrollment, but also the online options? And locate it in a really easy to play, easy to find place on our school division website? And if we can't do that, then I would say maybe like what Ms. Williams was saying, like if we could locate it with Spark, especially these, these independent online offerings, maybe would be good, because I feel like sometimes information is out there, it's just really difficult to find. And there are some really great offerings, not just our Virtual Prince William and Virtual Virginia, but other options as well. And I think that, then we facilitate that communication piece that the community is really hungry for. And if we make it really easy to find and everything in one place, then I think that we could really help people out. I don't know.
May I add to that, please?
Sure, Dr. Walts. Your microphone's working.
Yes, okay, great, great, great to be with you. And thank you, Mr. Bassett. We appreciate your assistance. So we have on the website, there's a link, it's called twenty twenty summer programs for students at P W C S dot E D U. Today, there was a story in Scoop, and that's one of our most popular communications tools. So several thousand people are signed up for that. Now, there's a lot going on every day, but just to let you know, that did go out today. And then we have plans to promote this on all our social media. So everything you're asking for is in motion.
Okay, that's good to know. That's great. I had one other question, if you don't mind.
Sure.
So, do we have a, so they're, going back to the note that said, if a student enrolls in a course, then they need to have prior authorization from the school principal. Do we have a procedure laid out for students to follow that's clear and simple to obtain that, that permission, I suppose? Let's give the scenario, a student finds a class that they want to take, like a chemistry class or something like that, and it's through like a college, a university, like that has an established online program. If they want to get credit for that as a high, in the high school, would they, is there a procedure that's clear and easy to follow? Is that published out online? You know, that they could, that a student could walk themselves through that process?
Yes, one of the reasons why I had emphasized the importance of working with their school counselors is because the forms and the process that they need to follow are shepherded through their counselor's work. So we, with the expansion of these opportunities that we've added, we also put in a process by which parents and students and our staff can find courses that meet the Virginia state qualifications for credit. This will streamline a lot, because there's a lot of providers. You mentioned chemistry, you know, you could go find several course providers on that approved list that offer chemistry. If someone wants to go off of that list, that's where they'll, they'll run into problems, delays, and disapprovals. But, but there's no reason why they shouldn't be able to find anything that they would have been looking for on that list. There's a lot of courses.
Okay, so, and so clarify then, if they, the procedure is very clear online that go talk to your school counselor, start with your school counselor, and your counselor will walk you through the process? Is that basically what?
Yes, and, and we'll make sure, I'm not sure where that feedback's coming from, or if I'm the only one hearing that, but the process that, or the information that we have here, we'll make sure that students are pointed in that right direction. But, but our staff have, on our Intranet pages that are for Prince William County staff in student learning, there are the directions for the counselors to follow, the forms that they use, the step-by-step resources that we provide them to make sure that they get kids matched up with courses that will meet their needs. People just do need to be careful, and that counseling process is a value-added process, because I'll be, I have to be very honest with you, not everything out there is good. And there are quite a few stories I can tell you about kids who've embarked down the road with a virtual course, found themselves in a bad way, without support, without the technical support, with low quality resources, you know, they submit something and it isn't, it isn't picked up. So these sources that we've identified that were approved by the state of Virginia have gone through a certain level of quality check that we feel confident will make sure that our families have a better chance of getting a good value. But there's reports that families can find on this webpage that will tell them the success rates or the completion rates that students have with these classes that they start. Not all of them are the same, so people will want to make sure they take a close look at that. And we always encourage them to start with our Prince William County Virtual High School and the Virtual Virginia course. But there are other options available for them.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wall. And I'm going to go around the room. Ms. Zargarpur?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bassett, well, let me, first, let me talk to the parents who are sitting out there and maybe some of the students. One of my children took a summer class last year, and it was a really good experience for her. Her teacher was excellent. The kinds of assignments and things that she did were very appropriate. Her teacher was really good at helping her manage her time. So that was a great experience. I highly recommend it.
And Lisa, for clarification, that was through our own summer virtual program?
Yes, which I understand is going to be on Canvas now, correct?
Yes.
Yes. All right, so, Mr. Bassett, this is my, my question for you, is how many seats are available for the courses that we do offer within Prince William County? Because I was a little not on the ball and wanted to sign her up for something this summer, and everything we looked at has got a waitlist. So I'm just curious how many seats, which, that's a good problem, right? But I'm just curious how many seats?
So I would have to defer to my colleague, Ms. Phillips, for that question, because I don't actually supervise the virtual high school myself. She might be able to give us the answer to that.
Is she on now? Or no, she's at another meeting, right?
I believe she's available on tonight's call. If she's not, we can get you, we can get you that answer.
So the reason I'm asking isn't actually personally, it's just because I know this is going to happen to other people. They're going to go on and they're going to see that there's things that have a waitlist and are full. And I just want, want them to know that these things do, like slots will open up, but I want to get an idea of how many we have. Then the other thing I wanted to just comment on, again, this is to the parents and students first. I have three daughters. My older two daughters went to Nova first. They didn't get to take dual enrollment. It wasn't offered in any of their classes at any, I don't believe there were anything that was offered when they were in school. But the value you get for going to Nova is you save so much money on college classes and you get the opportunity to take your time kind of figuring out maybe what you want to hone in on if you're on a college path. So I just wanted to just say that it's a great value and was a great experience. And both of my, my oldest daughter went on through George Mason. She's worked on a master's degree. And my middle child just got accepted to George Washington, and they gave her a chunk of money to go. So it's actually going to cost us less to send her there than it would to an in-state school. So just look at Nova, please. If you get the opportunity to take a dual enrollment class, I would highly recommend it. It's, it's, it's good for a lot of reasons, but I think for us, for our household, we didn't, we don't have a gazillion dollars saved up for college. So this was a great path. That said, the other thing that I was curious about, because COVID has now changed a lot in a very short time for us, and looking at the potential of being able to offer online classes. Are we going to, because, Mr. Bassett, you also said that students need to, you know, manage their time better and things like that. So are, are we looking at possibly offering some online courses in the future where kids could, could do sort of a hybrid thing? Is, I mean, I know that might be what our fall looks like, who knows? But I'm just curious, is like a future like, aha, we should be doing this? Is that something we could be planning on as an educational opportunity?
We are rapidly moving in that very direction. That is, that is what my, my team and teams of teachers are deeply involved in developing right now for the fall. We can be in a strong position to have on this online platform of Canvas available to, to support instruction with for all kids. It's a big, big undertaking, but it's work that we're engaged in as we speak.
Yeah, I really think that even though COVID was really challenging, it's going to also show us some opportunities that we weren't, you know, maybe we weren't quite ready for, but we sort of got pushed into. So I'm excited to see what comes out. Thank you so much for your time.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Wilk? I'm good. Ms. Ralston?
I think she's good. Okay.
Did you get it, I said?
You're good, Ms. Ralston, is that correct?
I'm fabulous. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Ms. Jessie?
I'm sorry, I was distracted by Ms. Ralston, who says she's fabulous. I think most of my questions have been answered. I have, well, I noticed the tuition costs. I'm just wondering, you have a reduced rate for people on free and reduced. What are those rates? And is there any rate where, is there something where parents who cannot afford or students who cannot afford the college, those courses? Is there something available for them?
So the, the Virtual Prince William courses during the school year, there's no tuition for, for students who are enrolled in those classes. For the summertime participation in the Virtual Prince William courses, there's free access or reduced tuition for students who are on free and reduced lunch for that, for the summer tuition. So again, those courses do fill quickly. For Virtual Virginia, I'm not aware of any specific reductions in their summer fees for free and reduced lunch. I would encourage families who are interested to contact Virtual Virginia for their latest tuition information and fee structure. The same thing is true for these other private vendors, who I do not, I do not believe they have any, I've not seen any discounted rates for free or reduced lunch. Nova's tuition is complicated. I actually have a link on the slide here to direct people to that, because it was, it would have taken us several slides to explain all the different tuition rates that they actually have there for students of all different backgrounds and needs.
Okay. The other thing is that, you know, being home and watching Netflix, you have this thing where you can skip commercials. And I'm wondering if there's some way for us to, and perhaps we don't need this, since there's this long waiting list.
Anything we can do that promotes the the uh, programs that we offer, I'm I'm all for. Um, I do think the summer program has been wildly successful, as evidenced by the folks who've mentioned that we have some waiting lists. Um, these these other options are available. You've seen the private providers who've been all over the TV in the last several months as well. Um, but I I'll talk with the director of the Virtual High School and see what other kind of plans we have for marketing their services to to folks in the school division to make sure we keep getting the word out.
Uh, when you say that those courses are closed, is there some plan to expand if you have a lot of interest in those courses?
Yeah, it's trying to get more teachers um, secured who can teach in that platform 100% virtual. That that requires a skill set, and a lot of our teachers will, we're going to have a lot more teachers with those skills in the um, in the months ahead. Um, but I know right now it's something that is at a premium for us. There's a lot of demand for people with those skills, and it does take some, does some, gets, take some training and get people up on on plane, so to speak, with that skill set. Um, but yeah, you know, I I think we would love to have more sections, and I know that um, Mr. Hellman has been aggressively trying to recruit teachers to um, add sections uh, where we're full. Um, that really is the major limitation, um, is the um, is the availability of staff.
Yeah, because there, there's a lot of research on the amount of regression that's taking place with these kids, and of course, I know we've got the uh, re-entry plan and all these other plans that Dr. Wallen's staff has in place, so uh, I'm just concerned about uh, this summer regression and access to technology and making sure that we make it available. But I want to thank you for the comprehensive report you gave tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie, you're very welcome.
Mr. Bassett, before I go to Ms. Jackson, a question, follow-up question on what Ms. Jessie brought up. My understanding is Virtual Virginia has suspended all fees down in Richmond. I I thought that part of the VDOE rollout of the pandemic issues is to make Virtual Virginia free, but but I'm not positive on that. Can we get clarification on that or have someone look that up for us? Because I I thought I had read somewhere, and I I was under the assumption that Virtual Virginia was made free for everyone um, in the state, and they wanted to reduce barriers for students um, to use those opportunities during the pandemic. Um, but but you don't have to answer that now. If someone can answer that, I'm going to defer now to Ms. Jackson, if you have any questions, Ms. Jackson.
I do, I just have one quick question. Thank you for the the PowerPoint today, it was very informative. I was just, I'm concerned also about accessibility that a few other board members mentioned. Would all of this information be available on translated documents?
I, while we've been on, I just got a text from my colleague, uh, Ms. Ms. Cologne, who said that she will be um, have perfectly happy to translate materials that um, that we'd like to have advertised in that way, so the answer is yes.
And then, if you could please consider, please, um, tweeting the translated document link, that would be very helpful. I would appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. We can do that. Dr. Latif, um, that I do have an answer to your question. They're advertising right now on the Virtual Virginia webpage that um, courses for the summer registration um, will have a an enrollment fee of $375 per course. So I think what you're referring to, uh, Dr. Latif, is the availability of the courses that Virtual Virginia is making available to divisions to bring into their learning management systems. And so there's a an effort afoot, and I'm working very closely with the director of that program, Mr. Brian Mott, at VDOE, to um, share content that they've developed in Virtual Virginia, to bring it into Prince William County's instance of Canvas, so that we can have the content that um, kids are taking in Virtual Virginia available to our kids in our courses. Um, we're expecting to get those in the latter part of July, so we still have a lot of our own work and development to do before we would ever receive those resources, but we're excited about the fact that those will be able to be added to the things that our curriculum teams are working on right now to get ready for the fall.
And and my understanding is that um, our our choice and decision to go with Canvas was um, uh, decided because of the flexibility and um, I don't know what the computer was, uh, the 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 ability to work with what already the state is doing and what our universities are doing. I think Dr. Walt had mentioned that before, and uh, but but that should help make this easier. Is that correct?
Sir, and our community college system is utilizing Canvas. Um, I believe that's statewide, um, so we've been working with some of those folks to learn lessons from them. Um, I know that my daughter at James Madison University, they use Canvas. It's a very um, widely-used platform, and um, it's, teachers have loved it. I mean, the feedback that we've gotten from folks who've been in there working in it, I found it to be very user-friendly. It's got a lot of layers, and you know, so as time goes by, you can become increasingly more proficient, more advanced with it. It's got a lot of bells and whistles that you can kind of tune up, you know, as you go, but um, to get a basic launch off, um, it's it's a pretty good, robust system.
Well, well, I I want I want to thank you for this presentation, and and I I think I would just add one other thing, that I would love to see us have some type of repository or place where we can, and I, and again, as as Ms. Jessie, Ms. Wall pointed out, I, if we have private vendors working in that K through eight area who are offering, I don't know, some type of online or, you know, virtual coursework, we have, I know, you know, um, organizations here within the county, um, there's organizations doing SAT courses and ACT courses virtually, uh, but but even K through through eight, um, I, you know, I I know we're not in the business of promoting private vendors, uh, and I don't know if there's a an ability to 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 vet those private vendors, but we're also in an emergency situation, and I and I look to this public school system, uh, maybe, maybe not necessarily the right way to look at it, but as as a place who can send folks, um, especially for the things we're not able to deliver, you know, um, hey, look, there are some resources out here, um, you're on your own with them, um, they're not, we're not validating them, maybe, you know, you can put it through the Spark website because that's a 501(c)(3) or or in there, you're going to pointing out to business, uh, businesses in the community or doing things, but just to, maybe Dr. Walt or folks um, in the administration, consider that as thought, because I I I just hear so much anxiety from our our families about what to do and where to go, and 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 I know you guys are all doing yeoman's work on on that stuff, and and that will continue, but I know that uh, sometimes there are folks who are asking for a little bit more. I'm going to, Ms. Williams, I see your hand up.
So I just wanted to piggyback on that really quickly. Um, being a new elementary, a renewed elementary school parent, again, um, eh, one of the things that we we often utilize, elementary school parents specifically, and and I know often in middle school, and a little bit less as high school, mostly because the backpack doesn't always make it home. Um, it's like, I call it backpack mail. So those other resources are usually like, sent home in a Friday folder, and it's clear that we're, as a school division, not advertising that. Um, but we don't really have backpack mail right now because there's no backpacks and no one's going to school. Um, so I I think that that Dr. Latif brings up a really good point. Um, anything that we can do, and and if we have to, you know, make clear in bold, bold lettering, that it's not a school-sponsored activity or a school-affiliated activity, but so that we can keep that sense of information flow going, um, especially for the little ones, I I think would be very helpful. Um, I don't, you know, don't want to break any publication laws or anything like that, but um, you know, that's something that I think a lot of parents are already in a habit of looking for. So just to try to keep that that those communication lines open and and available so that our students have the, as many opportunities as they can available to them, I think would be really good.
Sorry. And please understand, you know, this is all as a supplement to what you guys are already working hard on, and and I and I think that's important to to emphasize, that the Prince William County schools are working day and night on behalf of our students to get the distance learning curriculum and and the work out there to do and 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 get ready for the fall. So um, I want, I want to make it crystal clear that all, you know, I'm asking, um, is that, um, you know, if there are other opportunities out there, a repository similar to what we're doing with that Virginia 24 learning and 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 other things, if there are state initiatives that we could participate with, or if there are folks, we'd be happy to hear that. You don't have to answer that now. Um, to summarize and sort of put a exclamation point on one of the things you said, Ken, um, our counselors and our APs and our staff really need to be familiar with this, so if a student or a family calls and says, hey, what are our opportunities through Virtual uh, Prince William, Virtual Virginia, um, that we are really clear on delivering a a consistent message across the division, um, that I I I believe should be appropriate and not discouraging, but but uh, but but um, uh, something that can be helpful, and I know you're working on that as well.
Yes, sir. We've trained all the directors at the high schools on in these processes, uh, probably about three weeks ago. Um, so there there's at least one person in every school who has a a good, strong command of the the changes that we've made to expand these opportunities, and of course, I'm, uh, I I get emails and phone calls from folks all the time to help them through that, so not a problem. Yes, sir.
Thank, thank you, sir, I appreciate it. And so I'm going to go now to Dr. Walt. If you had any anything to add to this conversation, then we'd love to hear your thoughts on uh, what we did with Ms. Lillian Orlick and um, Officer Gwenden, and then we will lead you into superintendent's time, and then after superintendent's time, we will go to 2102. If that's okay with you, Dr. Walt, does that sound right? Good?
Excellent. Yes, everything's good. I'm very, very pleased with the naming. Uh, we appreciate everybody's input, and it's always great to uh, recognize heroes in the community. Um, and uh, certainly Lillian Orlick is somebody I I I know very well myself, and uh, the the police officer, I mean, to to have something named after her, I think is wonderful, and and then, of course, to have the Gainesville High School name uh, will be, I think, very, very much accepted and appreciated uh, for that high school. So thank you for everybody's input and great job with the board in terms of uh, the way in which you all came together with your input, and same with the boundary hearings, so uh, very, very good job.
Thank you.
Do you want me to roll right into uh?
Yes, sir, superintendent's time. You have a lot of, a lot, a lot to cover tonight.
Yeah, pandemic update.
Yeah.
As we have reached the end of the academic year, I would like to begin this evening by saying thank you. This is not the year anyone expected. However, thanks to a remarkable community effort, we made the best of an incredibly difficult and unprecedented situation to support our students, families, and employees as best we could. Thank you to our teachers, student learning, and student services staff, who remarkably transformed learning for our students nearly overnight, and adjusted rapidly to the challenges of supporting students virtually and remotely. Thank you to our administrators, who worked tirelessly on the many logistical challenges, from managing staff remotely to ensuring every student had technology, to distributing materials and coordinating diploma pickups. Thank you to our support staff and teams of dedicated employees. All our departments have been working hard, from distributing over 606,000 meals, to technology and communications keeping us connected, to our human resources, finance, and facilities team continuing critical work uninterrupted. We not only reinvented public education, but our finance staff reinvented our budget, too. Thank you to our students. This was not an easy year, but you persevered and demonstrated great resilience in the face of adversity. I again congratulate our graduating, our graduating class of 2020 and hope to see you in person this August, should conditions allow. Thank you to our families. Our parents and guardians, as always, are key to the success of our students, and that is clearly demonstrated this year. We greatly appreciate your flexibility and collaboration as we partner together to support our students. Now, as we look ahead to the next academic year starting in August, we only yesterday afternoon received guidance from the governor and the Virginia Department of Education. I would like to share with you a few key highlights from their 136-page guidance and requirements, which are readily available on the VDOE website. First, we assume that we will be in Phase 3 when school is scheduled to begin in August. Under the state's requirements, learning and instruction must be provided for every student. In-person instruction can be offered for all students, however, strict social distancing measures must be implemented and are required. Virtual instruction is also an option, and so is a hybrid model, allowing for both in-person and virtual. Remote learning, exceptions, and teleworkings should be options for students and staff who are at high risk of severe illness. Under the current CDC guidelines, this includes anyone 65 and older, and those persons with underlying health conditions such as asthma, diabetes, heart disease, obesity, and those who are immunocompromised, including those undergoing cancer treatments and other immune weakening drugs. Per the state requirements, mitigation strategies may impact school operations and student capacity limits. Additional operational requirements mandated by the state include physical distancing, such as keeping students six feet apart, that includes on the bus, gathering limits and other mitigation strategies, including the use of face coverings by students and staff. The VDOE is requiring physical distance between children on buses when possible, including one child per seat, every other row, and limiting capacity is needed to optimize distance between passengers of six feet. Children, such as siblings living together, may sit together on the bus. VDOE and the state are requiring physical distancing of at least six feet to the greatest extent possible in all buildings and classrooms. Other social distancing precautions should include, but are not limited to, restricting mixed classes and closing or staggering the use of communal spaces, such as cafeterias, and limiting outdoor activities and recess to 50 people, with a priority on social distancing and restricting the mixing of classrooms. Large gathering limits will be determined by executive order in effect at the time. According to VDOE, athletics and extracurricular activities may continue with some mitigation measures. This includes limiting athletes' contacts with each other, perhaps only allowing for some sports training rather than competitions. More guidance will be forthcoming from the state. Before entering Phase 3, and we're just entering Phase 2 on Friday, every school in Virginia will be required to submit to the VDOE a plan outlining their strategies for mitigating public health risk of COVID-19. Additionally, public school divisions will be required to submit a plan for providing new instruction to all students in the 2021 academic year, regardless of phase or the operational status of the school at the time. This plan must also include strategies to address learning loss during the spring of 2020, school closures, and plans for fully remote instruction, should public health conditions require it. While we agree that the safety of students and staff should be at the forefront, we also recognize this guidance is a significant unfunded mandate to our school division, and places an immense challenge on our teachers, administrators, staff, students, and families, both fiscally and logistically. We also recognize that the state's directives are not aligned to the realities of our school division's scale, scope, or budget. Additionally, the physical distancing, bus, and building capacity requirements, and health considerations of staff and students, will unfortunately make it impossible to have all students and staff in buildings at any one time. Therefore, we will have to implement some variation of distance learning, alternate alternating schedules, and telework. Despite these challenges, we are working hard to prepare for the fall. We have a number of plans that have been taking shape over the past few weeks. It is important to note, as I shared previously, PWCS has a number of actions that were underway before we received this guidance yesterday. First, we have multiple collaborative teams comprised of school-based instructional staff, including special education and English learning, as well as school-based administrators and department leaders, working on development and completion of plans. Mr. Bassett referred to some of that work as well. This includes development of our PWCS Return to Learn and Work Plan, as well as a team working on including special education and English learning, as well as school-based administrators and department leaders working on development and completion of plans. Mr. Bassett referred to some of that work as well. This includes development of our PWCS Return to Learn and Work Plan, as well as a team working on implementing our digital learning management system Canvas for the fall. We are continuing to implement our digital equity plans as well as providing computer devices for students without them at home and access to the internet through a combination of Wi-Fi parking lots, hotspots and reduced cost internet through Comcast. These plans take into consideration the health and logistic challenges involved and will be greatly shaped by the guidance we received yesterday afternoon from the state. Second, we will be surveying families and staff during the next two weeks to obtain further feedback on the guidance from the state, as well as to gain insights to shape our final plans. It is my hope to have a more specific return to learning update for the school board to consider in mid-July. I had previously shared with you our summer learning plans and they remain, uh, with the virtual offerings as you, uh, heard previously, and then our distance learning opportunities as Mr. Bassett also shared with you. I do want the school board and community to be aware that based on the governor's guidance yesterday, we are developing plans to host in-person ACT in our schools starting this July and SAT testing in August. We will be determining the protocols that will need to be in place in order to do that safely. It is also important to acknowledge as we prepare for our return to learning plans for the fall, we must do so with consideration for the recent events occurring locally and nationally. As I continue to watch with great sadness of the past several days, first and foremost, my heart breaks for George Floyd, his family, his friends, and all of my fellow Americans and global citizens who have been moved by the loss of his life. For America to flourish, we must stand behind the rights of every person to live and function within our society in a way that is safe and helps them to feel secure. Recent events locally and nationally have shown that the voices of many in our community are not being heard. As a majority-minority school division, we must not only celebrate diversity and equity, we must actively pursue it for all of our more than 91,500 students. Furthermore, we must be vigilant in promoting anti-racism. As I announced last week, I believe we must take immediate actions to support anti-racism efforts. First, we will not tolerate hate in any form in our schools. It does not align with the values of this school division. This includes the symbols we choose to use and allow in our schools, which is why I recommended the board pursue removal of Confederate names and symbols from our schools. Additionally, I will develop a community panel comprised of diverse voices from across the county to collaborate on a review of our memorandum of understanding with the Prince William County Police and make recommendations if changes are needed. Our police department is a critical partner to our schools and our intent is to strengthen the relationship in a positive manner for every student and staff. And we truly thank them for their service. Additionally, we continue to pursue our equity work well underway and continue to provide training to our staff to improve our cultural competency. In closing, it took our entire community working together to adjust to this unprecedented pandemic this year, and I thank everyone for their hard work. It will take our entire community working together to tackle the injustices and inequities of our society, and we are committed to doing so. Lastly, it will take all of us together to undertake the immense challenges ahead this coming academic year as we work to return to learning. I know the road ahead is not easy, but I remain hopeful and optimistic that we will be successful and ensure a world-class education for every child. Thank you and stay safe and healthy.
Thank you, Dr. Waltz. Um, what we'll do is, um, I know there was, there was a lot to, lot to, um, lot to absorb there. If, if anyone has any sort of general questions, um, I know there's gonna be, so what, I, I know Dr. Waltz mentioned that the possibility of getting an update to the board in mid-July. I know a number of the public have asked if we're gonna be meeting in the summer. I think it's without question that with the pandemic and the daily changes that we will be adding meetings as the summer goes, and I know the board members are interested in that. And so I would just, um, we will public notice those, uh, additional meetings as soon as we, um, um, schedule them. And there's a number of, of, um, um, things we're gonna have to address anyways this summer that are pandemic and non-pandemic related. Um, but, but deal with the operations that are constantly changing on a daily basis. I think I'll go around the room for just a quick set of questions, if that's okay, Dr. Waltz, if there's any sort of general questions there.
Yes, the, the only thing I would add again is that we just received this over 130-page guidance. So, uh, we really are not prepared to, you know, to go into what all the things that we're doing over and above what I have stated here. But we would be, um, certainly amenable to coming back by mid-July and letting us share with you where we are at that point.
Okay. All right. No, that, no, that's, that's fair. I think I'll just give, you know, if the board members can keep it brief. There's, if there's just a, a, a question that they can answer offline later on or a concern you have that you wanted to address, that you want the public to know that you are, that you're working on, you know, recognizing that it, this document, um, was emailed like late last night or late afternoon. Um, I'll go with Ms., we'll do alphabetical order. Ms. Jackson, sorry to put you on the spot there. If you have anything to add or questions.
No, I, I know you just got the guidance yesterday and I look forward to, you know, the next, the steps coming. Um, I also appreciate the survey that you're going to administer. I know that my constituents also would appreciate a voice in it. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Ms. Jessie? Ms. Jessie?
I'm back. Okay. Uh, Dr. Waltz, uh, my condolences. Uh, I, 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 I guess I'm glad I'm not a principal because, uh, the average bus, if I remember, carries 65 kids, three to a seat. And with the social distances, I think that a principal could be, have a bus rotation that could last all morning, a lunchroom that could last all mid-morning and dismissal and trying to keep these kids distant. Uh, I think it's going to be a, a huge chore. Uh, I, I don't think, and then the thing that hit me is that the cost. Because as you know, when you have these kids in these smaller classrooms and you're trying to socially distance them, and I think my biggest concern is going to be, as I told Dr. Latif and several people, health. Uh, you know, I know that parents are concerned about health and we're gonna have to have some safety measures in place. And I think we're gonna have to have more people in those buildings to monitor those kids and try to keep them distant in the hallways and just keeping them safe because I think that, uh, down the road, we wanna make sure that we don't have something happen in our buildings. I, you know, I just, it's overwhelming and, um, good luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And, you know, you made some, some great points there. And, um, I have had with the other superintendents across the state, we have had three confidential meetings with the state superintendent prior to this release. So other people were not allowed on those calls. And, um, I can pretty much assure you unless somebody was sick, every superintendent was on all three of those. So, um, I, I had three of those hour and a half conferences within the last six working days. And when they said that, you know, this will be an average of 10 people per bus uh, or classroom with six feet distance in all directions. Um, I mean, you know, right there, starting off with that is, uh, well, I'll just leave it at that.
Overwhelming. Yeah, thank you.
Ms., uh, Ms. Diane Ralston? Ms. Ralston, are you there? You may be muted.
Please help me determine Latif.
Okay, while, while we, well, you're.
Get my message?
Yes, there you go, Ms. Ralston. Any, any thoughts, questions?
No, none really.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Ms. Walt?
Um, I just wanna say like, wow, that's, I can't even begin to get my head around that. So, um, thank you to you, Dr. Waltz, and everybody who's been working so hard on this. Um, I know the pandemic and all of the restrictions that are coming upon us because of it are just more than beyond our ability to comprehend. So, um, I, yeah, thank you for your efforts. Um, I look forward to, as, as a board, working with you to try to get this moving in the right direction. Um, and I know it's not gonna be perfect and no matter what happens, not everybody will be happy with it. Um, but I, you know, I know that, I know that this, the staff and all of the people working on it will do their, do their best. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wilk?
Um, thank you, Dr. Waltz. I know this stuff has come right at you and, uh, this is gonna be quite the undertaking. Uh, just some things in mind that we can talk offline, but just considerations of kind of the role teachers input is gonna be in this whole process. Uh, just thinking about how do we have teachers come in who might have pre-existing conditions or health issues, or even if they have a loved one at home that might have that. So trying to, you know, prevent obviously any type of spread of that. Uh, the other things I'm thinking about are, you know, obviously the students, um, and, and, and parents and parents of, you know, teachers who have students and parents in general, the childcare, uh, the impact one it's gonna have on that. So those are all just things that I'm thinking of that I'm sure your team will factor into decisions as we go into July. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk. Ms., um, Ms., I'm gonna go to Ms. Zargarpur next. I'll come back to you, Ms. Williams. Don't worry. Ms. Zargarpur?
Uh, thank you, Dr. Latif. Actually, uh, I'm not sure if I'm gonna be stealing Ms. Williams' thunder on this because she and I had a conversation, but, um, uh, Independence Non-Tрадitional School already runs. Um, they're, they're a good model for, for, um, running different kinds of schedules and having extended days and things like that. So that might be a, a great resource. Um, what I wanted to, um, and this, this, you can get back to me another time, but I, I've had a couple, uh, more than a couple, people who have children in special education are asking what, uh, if there's additional online resources available to them. Um, so someone can get back to me, um, at some point soon. I can, I can help them get that information. Um, yeah, I, 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 I don't envy the position, especially the larger districts because, uh, as soon as you say 10 kids in a classroom, um, I'm thinking about how so many classrooms have 30 kids in them. You need three times the amount of teaching staff and trying to figure out how much is live and how much is, is, is online. Um, it's, it's, it's gonna be a lot and I know we're gonna do our best. Um, the other thing I just wanna throw out there, I don't know if you can even possibly speak to it now or just, we can have a conversation later, is just about, um, best practices, uh, especially in distance learning. We, we did, we did crisis learning. This, this was a, um, a, a lot in a very short period of time, but we have time over the summer to make really good plans and to, um, find out best practices. So, um, I, I would like to empower teachers so that they have the best tools available. Um, families have the best information available so that their kids are getting the most out of it. Uh, you don't have to respond to that now. That can be a later thing too, but I just wanted to throw that out there. So, thanks.
Ms. Williams?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Zargarpur. Great minds think alike. Uh, you did kinda steal my thunder because I, I just recently, um, we had that conversation and then saw an email uh, where Mr. Icorn, hopefully suited me, Dr. Icorn, uh, was just received, uh, 2020 Digital Print National School, uh, National Association. Um, so I, I really run a champion program, um, that already utilizes some of the forward thinking that I think we'll have to consider as a school division moving forward. Um, and just the growth of that program speaks volumes. I mean, I, I think when I got on the board, they, they started with graduating class of like 75 and this year it's up to 225. And it's not all OSMAP students. It's students from all across our school division, um, for various needs. Um, so I think, you know, obviously I'm not a superintendent or a teacher, um, but I think it's a great place to look for best practices since it's already, we're leading the way in our division when it comes to those kinds of things. It's right here in our backyard. Um, and I, I've always spoke very highly of that program and I know Dr. Waltz has too. Um, they continue to demonstrate very innovative programming and I think that's fabulous. Um, I, I did want Dr. Waltz, after I got done speaking, if maybe you could just very quickly inform parents, because I've got some constituent concerns about not standing Y-K, pre-K through third grade. Um, the governor spoke about, um, having those students in the building and, and, and really dedicating some, um, extra attention to them and in-person learning. Um, and I don't know that everybody in the public really understands, um, why that's so important along with the ESOL and the special education students. Um, and I don't think I'm the best person to speak on that, even though I'm a huge advocate for pre-K. I, I think it's much better suited coming from you. I do like that, you know, um, with the school division and, and the school board plans to work collaboratively over the summer, I would encourage parents to check regularly, um, through all of our social media sites, um, on continuous updates that we may provide, um, as time rolls along. Um, I also just wanted to mention to parents, it's really important that the school division has your correct contact information. I've heard, um, repeatedly, um, from schools at every level, elementary all the way up, that, you know, people move and, and things change and sometimes, especially at our high school level, some of our students are, phone numbers are listed due to them being the primary communicator between, uh, the school division and, um, and their family. So if parents and, um, if you're out there listening, please make sure your information is up to date um, with your current school or the school you're expected to, to, your students are expected to be attending. And I also wanna make special note too that when we hand out computer devices, um, we passed out some already. There'll be more, um, passed out as the fall approaches, um, that parents really understand that there, there are, there is a level of responsibility, but it's really important to your student if you don't have a device that, um, you know, I would really encourage you to accept the device. Um, there's been some pushback sometimes from, I know some of our parents who aren't familiar with the school practices and, um, maybe they come from other countries or other places and they get a little nervous about, uh, uh, accepting laptop or learning device from our school system. And if you have any questions, I want you to, to feel comfortable enough to reach out to your school and, and get the most up-to-date information on what the requirements are or what your level of responsibility is. Um, I just really felt it was important to mention that. Um, and also to all of our sports parents and our sports community. Um, I know that we will work collaboratively and that the Virginia High School League will be having updates and the state will be having updates because we often leave sports out of the conversation. Um, but, you know, expect changes, continue to, to, to check and see, um, what those updates are. Um, sports are very important to our students' mental health as are all the, the other specials. Um, and I don't want those parents to feel like we're not giving you the attention that you deserve because we, we are thinking about that, um, and we definitely wanna hear from you. Um, and again, Dr. Waltz, I don't envy you for this, uh, position that you've been put in, but you've done a tremendously fantastic job of being on top of whatever the current information is, making sure that we don't have to backtrack and we're on the right path moving forward. And I have high, uh, hopes that we will continue along that path. And I just wanna thank you for the work that you've done during this pandemic and also for all of our teachers, our, our counselors, um, all of our staff and our parents. It's not been easy, um, but I think we all deserve, uh, you know, to give, give ourselves a little bit of credit um, for making it this far. And, um, you know, we're all hanging in there together. And I think that's also something really important to note that it's not just you. We're all in this together. So, um, with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then I'll just wrap up here. Um, again, this is just sort of comments and, and, and sort of concerns from, 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 from the chair at large. You know, when you have any of these, um, national disasters or hurricanes or floods or economic recessions or depressions, it's always economically disadvantaged who are hurt the most. You know, um, folks with. You know, um, folks with, with resources can, um, can, um, sign up for some of these classes that we, you know, pointed out for, um, you know, with Virtual Virginia or these other things. And, and I worry the most about our students who are economically disadvantaged. And I think the, the gap and for both opportunity and, um, and achievement, um, is in, in, in real danger, as, as I think Ms. Jessie pointed out, studies are already showing that we're, we're, we're falling behind with these students. And so, it is an enormous challenge, Dr. Waltz, that you, you have, um, been thrust into and upon, um, that I think we have to work through and, and really mind, um, very carefully as we sort of roll out what we plan on doing and, and hopefully trying to get those kids caught, get all kids caught up. But specifically, specifically the ones that I, you know, the economic disadvantaged ESL learner, special ed, we have a lot of work to do, um, ahead of us, and, and that's a challenge for the entire nation in this regard. Um, secondly, site-based management. During this time, I have, um, concerns that it's, it's really important that, you know, we'd be trying to be consistent across the board in our delivery of, of virtual instruction, um, expectations, and really, um, you know, um, try to hold everyone to a high standard, um, which is a new standard, a standard that we're all struggling to sort of recognize and understand. But I think it's very important and is an enormous challenge, I think, as well for the administration to ensure that, um, our sites are, 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 um, working together and, and sharing best practices and, and, and being consistent in its delivery, um, to the best of our capabilities. So I, I can't thank you enough for what you've had to go through, what you're doing, what you're going to undertake. This is, um, uh, incredible times. Um, and so I think what I'll do now is, um, without further questioning, and thank you for your patience, Dr. Waltz, as we went through that exercise with the board members. Uh, we will now move to 2102. Um, and, um, um, and this is, uh, brought up by a number of members. Um, it's the Evaluation Study of the Energy Conservation Measures. Um, and this item is on for action, and I, I'm going to go ahead and read the, the, the motion and the impending resolution, um, if, if no one objects, um, that the Prince William County School Board, um, so be resolved that the Prince William County School Board, or I motion that the Prince William County School Board requests the superintendent staff to incorporate the input of board members into the proposed study addressing energy conservation measures and approve the proposed sustainability initiative. Um, I will go ahead and read this initiative, and, and this is for everyone to understand that this was a document, um, that everybody, um, gave input on because everyone has brought this up, um, in our original retreat in the fall. Um, talking about our strategic plan and talking about the, um, well, I'll go into all of that after I, I guess I read the initiative. But this is a, uh, a compilation of, of board members' requests and concerns. Um, this is a sustainability initiative that, um, I hope that the school board will adopt this evening. Whereas, the Prince William County School Board desires to protect and enhance the quality of life for all those who live, work, learn, and play in our community, as well as for our children and grandchildren. And whereas, Prince William County Public Schools has 95 schools and 11 support buildings with 11,337,234 total square feet and energy consumption that is a significant portion of division costs or budget. And whereas, there is a scientific consensus regarding the reality of climate change and the recognition that human activity, especially the combustion of fossil fuels that create greenhouse gases, is a key driver of climate change. And whereas, climate change has been widely recognized by government, business, academic, and other community leaders as a worldwide threat with a potential harm, our, potential to harm our economy, safety, public health, and quality of life. And whereas, the Prince William County Board plans on creating a long-term strategic plan to address sustainability concerns while also recognizing that new clean energy technologies provide financial savings and improved efficiency for schools and taxpayers. And whereas, whereas, the Prince William County School Board recognizes sustainability as a high priority moving forward in regard to reducing the division's overall carbon footprint, protecting the environment, and realizing cost-saving with emerging energy technologies. Now therefore be resolved that the Prince William County School Board directs the superintendent to, um, and if everyone can put mute on, um, I'm getting some feedback, but, um, be resolved, um, that the county school board directs superintendent to one, um, there's not one, but establish standards and provide options for designing and construction of net-zero buildings, including all-new construction and major renovations over 10,000 square feet, as well as any major roof replacements. These options may include solar, wind, geothermal, and other sources of renewable energy where appropriate. Present the school board with solar power purchasing agreement plans for all-new construction and retrofitting opportunities for older schools where appropriate. Establish standards for procurement, installation, and operations of said systems. E. Example, solar orientation, roof constructability, and maintenance, et cetera. Recommend a standard of high-performance buildings, building, building design specifications that meet or exceed such commercially available standards as lead, chips, well-building, or other best practices. Provide an update on the progress of the pilot program for two electric school buses provided through Dominion Energy's pilot on electrification of buses. Provide the cost and address the feasibility of replacing all fossil-fuel school buses with electric school buses. Establish a sustainability advisory committee comprised of community members, staff, students, that will provide the school board with perspectives of all stakeholders. Committee members will be appointed by the school board, school administration, the Office of Energy Management and Sustainability. The committee will make recommendations to the school board. Request that the Prince William County Board of, the Prince William Board of County Supervisors, in concert with the school board, create a county-wide task force to address sustainability, clean energy opportunities, and operational resiliency for all government buildings, thereby leveraging the assets of the entire county to reduce the cost of moving toward clean energy options. Create measurable standards of environmental literacy to include a focus on sustainability for all K-12 students in Prince William County schools. Establish project-based learning opportunities with new efforts focused on sustainability and environmental literacy. Direct funds designated by school board for a sustainability study to prepare information, obtain external consultation with experts as necessary, to move the division toward net-zero sustainable school design and enhanced energy conservation. Increase site-based participation in recycling and waste reduction, and provide a timeline with deliverables for the above actions within the next 90 days so that the school board will have a foundation to develop an updated sustainability strategic plan. Um, so I know that was a lot to, to read, but I think it was important because I know it was something on the mind of all the board members. Um, I will open the floor for discussion with my first statements. Thank you for my, the board members for helping with this document. Um, I think this addresses many of the topics we have either as individuals.
You have a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I have a second? Do I have a second? Okay, Miss, I see Miss, um, uh, Jessie's hand for a second. Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Um, I will, um, now open, and, and so continue on with my, my, my thing, I get carried away. Uh, but I want to thank the board members for weighing in. I think I've included all board members' concerns, um, staff concerns. The staff worked with, um, us on this. Um, uh, we've had an opportunity to talk to folks in, in Arlington County who have worked through some, um, amazing programs, some folks doing some work with, with both Fairfax and Loudon as well. And so I would like to, I'll go around the room and, um, and, um, take input, um, and we'll start reverse alphabetical order. Ms. Zargarpur?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so, uh, the sustainability, um, of, of our schools, buses, um, making sure we have a cleaner environment is very important. And, um, I know I personally wanted to make sure this was part of our, um, our plan, um, the, I'm sorry, my brain's a little dead tonight. It's, uh, the five-year, um, comprehensive plan, yeah. So, I wanted to make sure that, that these things, um, are a part of that because it's part of the growth of our schools and, and, and caretaking of our environment, and it's tied into educational, uh, things, opportunities for our students. Um, and, uh, I got to, um, hear a lot about how Arlington is managing their projects, and, um, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that we have to consider. We have existing buildings that, um, maybe they could be retrofitted with, uh, solar panels, but they may not be in the best position on their, on their land. So, there's a lot of things that are, are going to have to be considered. Um, and I'm excited that we included wind and geothermal in, in this, uh, resolution. So, I'm, I'm excited about all the possibilities, and, um, yeah, that's it for now.
Thank you, Ms. Zargarpur. Ms. Wood, uh, I'll, I'll go to Ms. Williams last. Mr. Wilk?
I think everything has been captured in that, uh, resolution, so honestly, at this point, um, I have nothing to add.
Miss, thank you, Mr. Wilk. Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Mr. Latif, or Dr. Latif. Um, the two provisions that I am most interested in are, um, sorry, the, um, Sustainability Advisor Committee, um, comprised of community members, staff, and students that will give us a perspective, um, of all the stakeholders. I like that idea. I think it's important to have community input. Um, and they'll have some good ideas, um, and they will be a part of the process. So I think it's really important because initially we'll have some great costs, but hopefully we'll have some great savings. And, um, so we have the environmental aspect of this, but we also have the, the economics of this, and that's really important as well. So I, I'm happy to see that we have that proposal. Um, I also like, um, the, um, let's see, the working in conjunction with the County Board of County Supervisors. Um, I think that's really important because we are, we, there are a lot of cost savings if we can get more buildings involved. So, um, I just want to, um, add, you know, just put my support for those two measures in particular, and thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Wall, for pointing that out, and I, I would sort of echo the, the idea that, uh, I think working together with the Board of County Supervisors, um, um, will create a sense of shared responsibility, shared cost savings, and, um, um, shared, shared risk as well. Uh, moving on to Ms. Ralston?
Okay, is that, can you hear?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, I thought it was an interesting evening, uh, to listen to people tell us where we are on our way to. That's very interesting to me. So, I'm going to say thank you very much for the information, and I'll be gone. Thank you.
But, well, you got to stay on the meeting, Ms. Ralston. I need your votes. Um, next, we'll go to, um, Ms. Ms. Jessie.
You always have to be going after Diane, and Diane is funny. Thank you. Anyway, I'm still here. Uh, you know, I think Prince William has always been in the forefront when it came to environmental kind of considerations, and, uh, I don't have much to add to it. I thought it was a very comprehensive report, and I appreciate the work that you did in pulling it all together and pulling all of our ideas together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie, and thank you for always giving us, um, your, your great input. Uh, Ms. Jackson?
I just, um, I appreciate the, um, the motion also, and I feel like we, um, as a school board, that the motion reflects what the students have been telling us for some time, and I think it's a step in the right direction. So, thank you.
Wonderful. I, I, I'll just circle back and, and thank you all for, for that. Uh, again, this is something that we've worked on, not just in the last couple of weeks, this is something that, oh, gosh, Ms. Williams, I'm so sorry, Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. That's okay. It's getting late. Um, so I'm really excited about this. Uh, I'm really excited about, um, hearing updates on our buses because I've been waiting a really long time for that, and, um, I think we're technologically in a place where we can make that move. And, um, of course, you know, I'm super excited about the project-based learning coming from, uh, project-based, uh, educational background for my own learning, and I think our students have demonstrated to us time and time again that when we involve them in the conversation and put them to work, they produce excellent results for us and with us. Um, and it also provides some accountability and some experience, really, for the, for the students who want to do this for their life's work. Um, and of course, I'm absolutely overjoyed and thrilled about the collaboration with the BOCs, um, and developing a committee. I think that, you know, we have not started with this board or the new BOCs board seated, um, to revive the joint, uh, committee, um, on, um, on buildings and, and, uh, land, and I think that this fits right in with that. It may be a chance to expand that scope and, um, really continue to further our, our relationship with them, and of course, provide some cost savings. And, um, overall, I'm just really overjoyed. I think you've captured the spirit of everything, um, from the community, from our students, from other board members, and from staff. Um, I just want to commend Prince William County Schools for the, the leadership that we have undertaken on energy management, energy efficiency, and really teaching our students. Um, we've seen it, um, myself been on the board for a while and seen it go through the ranks as our students. And, um, I just really appreciate the spirit of this initiative, and I hope that, um, you know, we unanimously pass this. So, thank you very much for having us on the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. I, I'll give a, a, a chance, uh, to, to Dr. Waltz also to weigh in. I wanted to thank Dr. Waltz, his team, Keith Emon, Al Chiroki, um, the facilities folks, John Wallingford, um, Dave Beavers, uh, Mr. Windley, uh, a, a great number of folks looked over these documents, Mary McGowan, Legal Counsel. Um, and, and we put a lot of thought into this, and, and, and I can't thank all of them enough for, um, being active, and Brian Gorman, um, with the, uh, with our Sustainability, uh, Office. Wonderful folks who are, um, you know, I don't want to speak for them, but I know, um, excited to, um, to, to, to consider this, uh, exciting new, uh, possibilities and opportunities. Dr. Waltz, please? You can unmute.
Sorry, Chairman Latif, uh, he is unmuted. Last time he had to join via phone and computer to be able to
Okay.
Communicate.
What? So that's fine, Jason. While he dials in, I'm going to go ahead and take the vote, and then I'd love to hear, well, we should probably wait to hear from him before we take the vote, but I will, um, um, thank the board again. I, it, you know, I think it's important to also thank, as, as Ms. Wall points out, the community members, the students, the folks from the different, um, constituent groups who, who, um, climate action that work, um, are, are people that just come in general to Citizens Common Time, um, and we all know who they are. But, Dr. Waltz, I think you're back?
Yes, I'm back. All right, very good. Yes, we're on board. Um, I'm a little bit nervous about the 90 days, but we will do our best in the midst of, uh, planning to reopen school and digest 130 pages of requirements. But, um, I think, um, just know that we're on board.
Well, that, that's wonderful, Dr. Waltz, and, and, and I, I really appreciate that, and I know your team has been doing, um, I mean, that, that specific team, uh, with facilities has dealt with the naming of the school, the boundary hearings, the, um, the, the new construction projects, the, the, the starting of construction projects that we just went ahead and did this summer that we normally do, and I know there's a lot of work going on, but I can't thank you all enough. And, and, and specifically in the enthusiasm that your team exhibited in the, um, desire to, um, to take this as a challenge for all of us in our community to, um, to consider, and I appreciate your bold, uh, embrace of this, and I appreciate, and I hope to ask that the school board members support this boldly as we, I think, for the first time in history of Prince William County, any Prince William County authority make a bold statement on this effort ever. Um, so I will take the roll call vote. Uh, first, I will go with Ms. Lisa Zargarpur. Mrs. Zargarpur, how do you vote on this motion?
Absolutely, 1 million percent yes.
Outstanding. Ms. Zargarpur of the Coles District votes yes. Ms. Will, Ms. Williams of the Woodbridge District?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As one of the first founding members of the Ecology Club at the opening of Lake Ridge Middle School, I emphatically support this resolution.
Wow, I like that, uh, editorializing. Excellent. Um, Ms. Williams votes yes. Mr. Wilk of the Potomac District?
I vote yes.
Okay, Mr. Wilk, thank you. Ms. Wall of the Gainesville District?
I vote yes as well.
Ms. Wall votes yes. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote? You have to mute, unmute Diane.
Am I unmuted now?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
I'm her.
Excellent. Um, Dr. Latif, I vote yes. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Sure.
Ms. Jessie of the Oquipon District votes surely yes. And Ms. Jackson of the Brentsville District?
Excitedly yes. Thank you.
Excitedly yes from Ms. Jackson of the Brentsville District. That motion passes unanimously. We will now go on to the, um, 2103, um, National Pride Month Resolution, and this was brought, um, forward by Ms. Jackson and Ms. Williams, and Ms. Jackson, a motion is in order?
Okay, I, I'll read the motion, and Ms. Williams, would you like to read the resolution? Okay, I'll read the motion, and Ms. Williams, would you like to read the resolution?
Yes.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the attached resolution and the board poll dated June 3, 2020, designating the month of June 2020 as Pride Month in honor of all Prince William County School students and staff.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. I'll read the proclamation. The Prince William County School Board LGBTQ+ Pride Month Proclamation states, whereas Prince William, whereas Prince William County School shares in the belief that the diversity is our, that diversity is our greatest strength, and whereas the National Education Association has included Pride Month in its list of Commemorative Months since 1995, and whereas the Prince William County School Board of County Supervisors resolved to proclaim June as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in 2018 and 2019, and whereas LGBTQ+ youth are almost five times as likely to have attempted suicide compared to heterosexual youth, and whereas each episode of LGBTQ+ victimization, such as physical or verbal harassment or abuse, increases the likelihood of self-harming behavior by 2.5 times on average, and whereas having a gay-straight alliance reduces a child's risk of attempting suicide by 50%. And whereas students at schools with gay-straight alliances experience less bullying around nonconformity, and whereas federal law guarantees students the right to form gay-straight alliance clubs where other non-curricular clubs exist, and whereas our community is better because of the diversity of our population, and whereas inclusion is a core value of our district, and whereas the school board is committed to creating a safe and welcoming school district for students, for, excuse me, for all students, and whereas the school board is committed to helping end the crisis of suicide in our community. Now, therefore, the Prince William County School Board proclaims June 2020 to be LGBTQ+ Pride Month and urges our citizens to join us in celebrating our students and staff regardless of gender identity, gender expression, or sexual orientation.
Very good.
Okay, do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Ms. Ralston, seconds. We, you know, we'll go around the room, and we'll do it in the same order. Ms. Zargarpore, we'll open the floor for any discussion, comment, or passing, as you wish. Ms. Zargarpore, please.
No, I'm very excited that this resolution is before us. It's really important to recognize that all of those facts about suicide or suicidal ideation are really important, and we want to make sure we're taking care of everybody.
That's true.
Thank you, Ms. Zargarpore. We'll go to Ms. Williams. We'll skip you. We'll go to Mr. Wilk.
I'm gonna vote yes. Thank you.
Ms. Wall.
Just getting myself off of mute. We're not voting on this. We're just commenting, right?
Yeah, commenting. Yeah, we're not voting on it. I don't know what, Mr. Wilk just got a little ahead of himself, I guess.
So I've always believed, and I believe that many people in the Gainesville District believe this as well, that students and all students deserve to be treated with kindness, inclusion, and respect regardless of race, age, national origin, religious belief, disability, gender, gender identity. They should feel safe and welcome in our schools. So that's just my comment on this issue.
Wonderful, Ms. Wall. I echo those sentiments. Ms. Ralston?
I'm fine, so thank you anyway.
Great. Ms. Jessie?
I'm sorry. Diane, stop it. Anyway, this is just very important, and you think of this situation at high schools and middle, but elementary, there are kids that are crying for acceptance, and so I support this resolution. Thank you.
Ms. Jackson?
Thank you. As an educator candidate and now board member, it's my philosophy that all children should have access to an excellent education. And as an elected official, I believe it is one of my responsibilities to ensure that all students feel included. I strongly believe that there's a connection between feeling safe, feeling included, and academic success. I want to send a message to all students who are at home away from school. Support, and it is a difficult time, and when possible, we must practice and lead with love and acceptance.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I first want to extend a huge amount of thanks and appreciation to Casa Brumar Foundation for helping with this resolution. I mean, they are a shining star when it comes to putting this resolution, encouraging, working with me for several months to get this put together. I could not have brought this to the board, or Ms. Jackson brought this to the board, without their assistance. I have long been an ally to the LGBTQ+ community. I think this is an important resolution, not only for our students, but for our staff as well. That is something I spoke very, very much on when we passed our nondiscrimination policy. I think that this school division is really, I'm so proud, really, that we're creating a welcome environment for not only our students, but our staff. It's really important. You don't perform your job well if you don't feel safe. And I know that being, coming up as a child of mixed race, you know, heritage, and at a time in Virginia where my parents moved here right after the Loving Case, and how difficult it was for my mother to just go to work and put pictures on her desk of me. So, you know, this is a different situation, but it has the same sort of feel around it, and I'm just so proud that our board is willing to make June, excuse me, LGBTQ+ Awareness Month, Pride Month. It just really means a lot, and I know it means a lot to our staff and our students. So I just want to extend thank you to the board and our division for constantly utilizing the words "all" and "and" because it makes a difference. So, thank you.
So I will follow up by saying I loved all the statements that each of you made, and, because I'm gonna do what Ms. Williams asked me to do, "all" and "and", and I echo all of them, and I can't thank you all for supporting this. I will take the roll call on this motion. Ms. Zargarpore, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Ms. Zargarpore votes yes. Ms. Williams, how do you vote?
I overwhelmingly vote yes. Sorry, I was on mute.
Ms. Williams votes yes. Mr. Wilk, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Mr. Wilk votes yes. Ms. Wall, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Ms. Wall votes yes. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Dr. Latif, I vote yes. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jessie votes yes. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson votes yes. Thank you. The motion passes. I think that completes, no, hold on one sec. Okay, 2104. The approval of the resolution condemning racism and commitment to inclusion. Ms. Lori Williams, this is an action item. A motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me get back to my right screen here. I'm dual screening. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the resolution condemning racism and affirming the school division's commitment to an inclusive school environment for us all. There's a resolution attached. Would you like me to read that now, or? Can't hear you, Dr. Latif.
Please read it now.
Okay, great. So the resolution states, where Prince William County School Board, resolution condemning racism and affirming the school division's commitment to an inclusive school environment for all, whereas members of the Prince William County School Board, as well as Prince William County Public School staff, are saddened and outraged by recent events that demonstrate the prejudice and injustice that persists in our country. Whereas racism and hate have no place in our schools or society, we must protect the constitutional rights of every person who lives, works, and learns in our community. Whereas we cannot be silent, we urgently must act to stop racial injustice that harms and anguishes Black people, who are our family, friends, neighbors, students, staff members, and fellow Americans. Whereas we must listen to those who have endured discrimination and intolerance, deserve to be heard as they share the stories and truths in their experiences and feelings. We must seek with great empathy to understand their challenges and their pain. Whereas we must learn. It is time to engage our community in meaningful and honest conversation about racial inequality, to build alliances with those committed to justice for all, and to work together to support our shared conviction in that racism must end. Whereas we must lead. Each of us individually and collectively is responsible for creating and nurturing an anti-racist learning environment where every child is respected and valued for who they are regardless of their skin color. We must actively acknowledge, address, and prevent racial bias that occurs as a result of division policies, practices, and actions. And whereas we must do better. Our school division can and will be a sanctuary of safety in our community and a beacon of light for the world as we build and strengthen trust with those we serve and we model the acceptance of all people. Therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the Prince William County School Board, stand steadfast in our commitment to foster an inclusive educational environment where every student, teacher, support professional, parent, and community member is treated with dignity and respect, as well as our commitment to continue fighting for racial justice and human and civil rights for all. Approved by the Prince William County School Board this 10th day of June 2020. Hopefully.
Do I have a second for the motion? Ms. Zargarpore seconds the motion. Any discussion? If anyone has anything to add to this? I'll go around the room very quickly. Ms. Zargarpore?
I'm just, there's just so much going on right now. And recently met with some students who gave us their perspective. This is a really important, not just a resolution, but it has to be actionable. We need to take down the racist structures of our education system. We need to look at our instructional practices. We need to look at how we are, you know, everything from dress codes to just, you know, educational content. So it's a big topic, and I'm here to support everyone who is going to be doing this work.
Thank you, Ms. Zargarpore. Ms. Williams will skip. Ms. Wilk, Mr. Wilk?
Mr. Chairman, I 100% support this. I had the pleasure of attending three Black Lives Matter events last weekend, one in Dumfries, Potomac Shores, and then Manassas. So I definitely believe this is very important for us to issue this. One thing I want to note, when it comes to like code of behavior and enforcement, although I definitely obviously support this, one thing I think we as a division and stuff should reemphasize and consider is, I'm hearing a lot from constituents about people being targeted for their political beliefs, their students, for personal political beliefs, whether it be the left, right, or something like that. And then I'm also hearing kind of some feedback that students, police officers, or federal law enforcement are being targeted by students as well in social media and stuff like that. So I 100% support this statement, but something to possibly consider or for the school division to look into is, how do we also, again, protect students based off their political ideologies and beliefs, and whether or not they support law enforcement or their parents maybe want or not to. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk. Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I'll just echo my previous statements that I believe, and I think the majority of people believe, that students deserve to be treated with kindness, inclusion, and respect regardless of their race, their age, national origin, identity, religious beliefs, anything, disability. So I think it's really important that we be consistent with this message, that we will not tolerate that kind of discrimination. And I appreciate the board leading on this. I think leadership is taking those stands. And this is, this is an important thing for us to do regardless of the person's race, or their background, national origin, their viewpoints, their choices in their life. So I just think it's really important that we respect that, put students first, all students, and try to work together. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Thank you, Ms. Wall. Ms. Ralston?
I just want to make sure that all people are happy. They are, they feel safe. And hopefully, they laugh. Just laugh a lot. Thank you.
Ms. Jessie?
Here I am, yeah. Thank you, Diane.
You're welcome.
With all the Black Lives Matter, I remember when Michael Brown was killed. Me was, as an educator, my daughter always said, Mom, you always look through the lens of an educator, and I always do. And I remember seeing all these Black boys on the street robbing stores, and I thought, what's going on? And then I read about the school systems in Missouri and the small number of kids going to colleges and even community colleges. And when we talk about all these platitudes, and we talk about renaming the school and all this, I think we need to think deeper than changing the name of a school. I think we've got to think about changing the practices. And those kids who are at Stonewall and various schools in these lower-income areas, there's a gap there. And the school board has to be serious about just, really, addressing the fact that there's been a gap. I've been on the school board for six years, and every, I look at our strategic plan, I look at the pre and, you know, you don't get the pre and post. We've got to be serious about the ability of kids to learn. If all of those kids on the street were either in college or in a career, I don't think you would have the problems that you have on the street. I think African-Americans want to be loved. They want to be accepted, but they want their kids to learn. One of our discussions was about football players, which I didn't know a great deal about. And understand that for a lot of these African-American boys, football is their way out. That's it. And the sports are just as important as the academics. So at the end of the day, it's not about renaming a school at all. It's reframing our practices and making sure that we hold people accountable, not for just teaching kids, but for student learning. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Ms. Jackson?
I'd like to echo what Ms. Jessie said about looking through an educator's lens. I wholeheartedly agree with the statement and how it starts to address barriers and gaps. I look forward to listening and addressing the barriers, including institutional racism. I appreciate the statement. Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
I just first want to thank the school board for entertaining this, and, you know, also to VSBA for providing a really good foundational template. As an almost lifelong resident and as a product of Prince William County Schools, I didn't honestly believe that we would ever get to a point where we would be making this bold statement to our community, and I am immensely proud that we are doing so. I think this piggybacks on the statement that the school board issued earlier in the week. I think it was this week. Time seems to run together. Accountability has been a really common theme that has come up from parents. Accountability has been a really common theme that has come up from parents, from students, every way we turn. We've, the school division has come a long way in addressing concerns since I was enrolled. And I think that we need to continue down that path. You know, we know from studies, we know from research, that our African-American, our Black students are often targeted for disciplinary measures, that there's cultural communication issues. They're perceived in society, but in general, as a lot older, and have to under, really lose their childhood earlier. And I can vouch that, and I can attest that as a mother of two Black sons, you know, I think this is a really important statement to make to our community, to our staff. I can't emphasize it enough. It's huge. And I think it goes a long way to proving to our, demonstrating to our community that above and beyond our statement that we made, we're going to continue to make statements. We're going to continue to look at best practices. We're going to continue to work on our own implicit biases. And we recognize that we all have them, and that it's really important to bring that out and to keep addressing that for everybody in our school community, for our fellows, for our students, for our fellow coworkers, for the staff. And I'm really proud of this board for continuing to speak on this issue and to do so boldly. I think it's really important for the mental health of our Black students and our Black families in this community. And I just can't thank the board enough for entertaining this resolution. It personally really means a lot, and I think it's going to mean a lot to our community. So thank you.
And then I'll just echo everything everyone said and add to that this is an excellent statement on addition to the statement we issued on Friday. And I would ask the public to look at the website and see what the Prince William County School Board statement was there. We won't read that again, but this is in addition to that, and an important resolution that I hope you all support and is critical. I will take the roll call on supporting this resolution. Ms. Zargarpore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Zargarpore votes yes. Ms. Williams, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Williams votes yes. Mr. Wilk, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Wilk votes yes. Ms. Wall, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Wall votes yes. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ralston votes yes. Dr. Latif, I vote yes. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
So that motion passes unanimously. Also, I didn't add, each of you spoke eloquently of your thoughts on this matter, and continue to do so. And I want to publicly say this, that the school board statement that we put out also last Friday was a statement by all of the school board members. I have to especially thank, I would, I may call her our in-house editor-in-chief, and that's Ms. Jen Wall, who's worked on editing and constant commitment to making sure we're saying the right thing in the way we want to say. And all the members for including their concerns, I think it's important. And I think it reflects on you as members and how you represent your districts and how you represent your values. And I can't thank you enough for that. So thank you all for that. There's a lot of work that the school board, and actually, let me, Dr. Walsh, are you still on the line? Because I didn't get a chance to, in the discussion, have you add in there. I know you talked about it in your superintendent's time, but would you, I don't know if we still have you by voice. Are you there? Can you unmute?
There he is.
How's that? Getting better by the minute. No, I sincerely appreciate all those efforts. And as you all know, I put out a statement last week myself. And I think that's a powerful combination of beliefs moving forward. And there are many action steps in that. And it's certainly my desire to make sure that every single student who goes to this school division gets a high-quality education and environment that's safe and that they feel secure and loved and cared for. So kudos to the board for your statement.
Thank you, Dr. Walsh, and thank you for that. One last thing. So we are wrapped up, and this is kind of the last sort of formal or official sort of scheduled meeting that we did for the year. This would have been an in-person meeting outside of the pandemic. Like I said, we will be announcing meetings as we add them to the schedule. Just a point of order. I would ask that the public continue to follow Scoop. That's going to continue throughout the summer. There's going to be website updates continually. And to our graduates for 2020, we want to congratulate you. There was a video by Dr. Walsh congratulating graduates, and the video from the school board that went out today that I want to thank the school board members for participating in and congratulating all of our wonderful 2020 graduates. We know you're going to go on and do wonderful things, and we are very excited to hear from you over the years and happy. With that in mind, the board had to cut short our, we have, I think, a couple of things left in closed session that are going to be relatively quick. So you all know the closed session links to get back into. It will be the original closed session link. Let's reconvene at that in 10 minutes. Thank you. The meeting is adjourned. Okay, so we are live in session. We've come back out of closed session. We have a closed session certification, action item, motions in order. Ms. Jessie, or Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3712, the closed session of Prince William County School Board meeting of June 10, 2020, be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed session meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Do I have a second? Ms. Wall seconds. Any discussion? I'll take the roll call. Ms. Zargarpore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Zargarpore votes yes. Ms. Williams, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Williams votes yes. Mr. Wilk, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Wilk votes yes. Ms. Wall, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Wall votes yes. Ms. Ralston, are you there?
She is, just muted.
Ms. Ralston, can you unmute?
Yes. How was that?
Yeah, excellent, excellent, Diane. Thank you. You voted yes. Love you, Diane. We'll go next to Ms., I vote yes, Dr. Latif. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Oh, yes.
Ms. Jackson, how do you vote? Ms. Jackson votes yes. That's unanimous on the closed session certification. That is our, at this point, the meeting is adjourned. Have a lovely night. Thank you all.